Good evening, everyone. At this time, would you please silence your cell phones for me? And we're going to ask for quiet before we start the meeting. I would appreciate it if there was no clapping while the commission is deliberating today. I appreciate so much that all of you are here tonight. And I wish this was at my house and we were having a party. At this time, I'd like us all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for 10 seconds of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for 10 seconds. Thank you, may be seated. Diane, would you please follow the roll? Commissioner Bond?
Here.
Commissioner Hannah?
Here.
Commissioner McCall?
Here.
Vice Mayor Housper?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
City Manager Mills?
Here.
City Attorney Laura?
Present.
Thank you. Do we get the fire chief?
Here.
Captain Leyer?
I'm here.
Just a little bit, okay, good. Did you get Jay? Jay Dagnall? Okay. So what we're going to do first is, this is a work session for the commission. So that's how we're going to begin this meeting tonight, is we're going to work on the framework that has been given to us by our staff. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Randy Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all of you who are here tonight. This very much is the democratic process in action. This community has been working for months to revisit policy, and that's what we do. Policy is rarely set in stone forever. What may have worked at some point may not work in the future, and this community can work to address its needs, and that's what we're doing tonight. As we revisit that evolution of policy, I wish to make very clear a few things. First and foremost, with the exception of one person to my right or left, these are your commissioners. Your commissioners are your legislative policymakers. While staff goes through every effort to make sure they have as much information as possible to make policy, staff does not make policy. The city manager doesn't adopt an ordinance, the city attorney doesn't adopt an ordinance, all the fine folks you had introduced afterwards, the sheriff's department, the fire department, and otherwise, they don't make the policy. The commissioners, in response to the community, do. So these legislative policymakers are going to be making policy tonight, and that's a challenging effort, given all the interests in this room. We have heard over the last few months from those of you who grew up in this community, recognize it from your youth with your parents and your grandparents, and don't recognize what you see around you. We've heard from those of you who worked very hard for years to carve out a future, perhaps a retirement, in a quiet beach community, and it doesn't resemble what you may have anticipated. We've heard from people who have invested in this community to support their families, their children, their own dreams, through investment properties, through any form of income to get by in difficult economic times. And all of these interests are trying to be balanced in one document that will somehow, likely, displease everyone a little bit. That said, we are now in a public meeting. This is a work session, so let's talk about what's not happening tonight. There will not be any new ordinance adopted tonight. The rules don't change tomorrow. This is the legislative process, which, if you remember Schoolhouse Rocks, is designed to be slow for a reason. It's going to take a little bit of time. But the part of that that matters tonight is, this is a work session for your commission. As much as your commission has been listening, whether you corner them in Publix, or they send to see your emails, or your public comments at meetings, they are listening. The one thing they haven't been able to do in between is talk amongst each other and establish some kind of guidance on a path forward. Tonight is their chance to do that. So with that in mind, the process tonight might be a little different for those of you who have come in December and November and our earlier meeting in January. This commission is going to go through a template document that, as the legislative policymakers, they are free to accept, reject, add, delete, modify, amend, however they wish. But ultimately, they are going to do that, and they are going to go through that whole process, the whole document. And once they are done, then it'll be open to public comments, subject to any time, place, and manner restrictions the commission may agree to impose. And so with that, I'm going to turn to the city manager and see if there's anything else he wishes to add before we begin going through the template document to work with tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Just have a few brief comments, updates for the commission. As of today, there was approximately 283 vacation rentals on the east side of Gulf Boulevard from Fifth Avenue to 28th Avenue. One of the things that we put in place after the November meeting was, all of you request for business tax or city or business licenses, that was vacation rental, those are now all being inspected before the BTR is issued to the applicant. That's under the current ordinance that we have. We implemented a monthly email communication with all vacation rentals to ensure focus on areas of concern. Staff has contacted every vacation rental on the city's BTR list to confirm the 24-hour contact information is correct. We continue notice of violations and sites as needed for various violations to the city code. We've added additional solid waste fees to locations where garbage exceeds normal residential volumes. They are charged a higher rate. That's of authority that the public works director has given, where he can actually charge a commercial rate if the volume warrants that. We've had discussion with VRVOs, particularly some of the ones that have been considered or been characterized as party houses. One location in particular has voluntarily agreed to stop marketing and booking to larger groups, but this will be discussed later in the meeting in relation to temporary dispermits. We've ordered decals to go on top of all solid waste cans to remind everyone about the placement requirements, as I said, we'll be placing the tops again. I've had one meeting and a couple conversations with Chief Davidson, who's here tonight, that we anticipate with adoption of the ordinance that his boards reviewed and consideration by this commission. The creation of a joint annual inspection by the fire department, the city and the county as needed. These inspections will be done for all current vacation rentals. As I indicated earlier, we're currently doing that for the ones that are filed out now. We have a RFP out on the street for special magistrate. If we receive qualified proposals, I anticipate those will be considered by the commission at the March 2023 meeting. As a reminder, a special magistrate is a person that the commission designates that acts as a neutral party to consider code matters. So if we have something that rises to the level of code compliance, that would go to a special magistrate. Also, the commission has previously authorized me to negotiate with host compliance company. Host compliance companies, companies that are in the business, searching the web for advertisements for vacation rentals, they provide backup information, and then that helps us kind of close the gap of if there's any out there operating, whether that's a proper, and it's currently without a BTR, but if you go with a certificate in the future. Part of that would be a 1-800 number that would be tied to the host compliance company, where if someone had a complaint, they're talking to a live real person, that information is taken, and then they turn around based on our list and contact the operator or owner of the vacation rental to make them aware that there's an issue. Staffing, we'll consider additional staffing during the budget review process based on whatever final ordinance, job ops, we intend to address that. We currently have adequate staff. Solid waste emails, we only have one person working on it, if that's not accurate. We have two code people, a finance person and another person up front, plus when we go to the coordinated inspection, that will include the city, the county, and the fire department. And then there's a RFP out for a new city website. The proposals for that are due on February 17. When we get those proposals, those go to the commission, we all get the firm. And the importance of that is that the business license forms, the vacation rental forms, all of that process can be done through the website, and then we have coordination through the fire department as one, as a, because the application is being considered, we could have the fire department connected to that, where they can sign off electronically through the website. So I just want to give a general operational summary.
Thank you, Greg.
So with that, Mayor, my recommendation as to the procedure going forward is, you have before you a roughly 20-page template, including a series of proposed regulations. Again, not offered as some sort of gold standard by which all policy must flow, but in order to stimulate a dialogue by you folks as the policymakers. So my suggestion is we just go page by page, and if anybody has any issues on the page, just raise them, and we can, I think that way, make sure nothing is missed in this course. Is that okay with the commission?
Yes.
All right, so with that, we start with the definitions section. You see the terms bedroom, city code, living area, occupant, and so forth are defined. Roughly the first two full pages are definitions. Were there any concerns any of the commissioners wished to raise in the definitions section?
Yeah.
I think that we need to also add, on the construction plans approved by the city's building official or another city, since they do inspections.
Well, and I would say that, I see that note, and I know that we received some public feedback to that effect as well. The county is acting as the city's building official adding.
Right.
The county doesn't necessarily change that discourse, but if you wish to, if the commission wishes for that to be explicit...
Under the contract we have with the county, it does that, the contract is...
My rationale for not putting that in explicitly is if for some reason that changes, and it's not the county serving, we decide to reestablish that, it should just be whoever is designated as the city's...
As the city's representative.
Good, thank you. So with that in mind, are there any other comments or concerns in the definitions section by the commission?
Okay, we'll move forward.
All right, with that, the next section is scope. This is a, what we would call a omnibus or complete regulation relating to short-term rentals. And the way, in the current draft, the way this would apply would apply within each of the city's zoning districts, no district excepted. That would capture the holiday in, your business district, CT district, all your districts would be subject to this regulation, again, subject to any input you may have as a commission.
One thing that I provided was a math, the current...
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. We're having a really hard time entering. Is there any way we can turn the volume up or something on the speaker?
We'll try, we'll try to project more.
We need to speak louder, we'll speak louder. Please, that would be a great idea. Thank you, thank you.
One of the things I provided to the GLL is that math that corresponds to the...
Can you hear him now? It's still difficult, I'm sorry. Okay.
Let this... Wake up.
One of the things I provided to the...
He locked it.
One of the things that I provided to the commission as a reminder, the current ordinance that we have, and I mentioned this a few minutes ago, but it applies to the area east of Gulf Boulevard and Fifth, all the way to 28th and the Ballard Beach, city of any of our speech line. And that's, so that's the topic, is that current ordinance applies in this defined area, so y'all, you need to make a decision whether it's going to, the new ordinance is only going to apply to this area or if it's going to apply to the entire city.
How does everybody feel about that? Joe?
As far as, I would feel we stay with addressing the same area. If we move into CT, a lot of the building tax change, housing changes, that may not be as kind of comparable to what we're seeing in the neighborhoods from a housing standpoint, maybe bedroom count, those sorts of things. Plus, you know, we have condos, multifamilies, different things that we have along the shoreline. So if we address what started, kind of started this discussion, would be my thought.
Does anyone else have any thoughts? I mean, Joe, do you see that as being a separate ordinance going on? Because it's like, we address it now or we address it later?
Yeah. Possible. I mean, you have businesses that run the gamut around the shoreline, like condos, which we have no ruling over, basically how they run their operation, and, you know, spattering of houses. You know, what, what seems to have come from this board for the 95% of what we're dealing with is happening in the neighborhoods, from a noise standpoint, and so forth. Just, because that, just my opinion. Because I know, you know, down, like in the downtown area, we've got, you know, multiple structures across the street, you know, from where I'm at, where my office is at, and I'd like to say the condo buildings and then just different size of homes and so forth up and down the shoreline, and it would be, in my opinion, you know, could take on a separate ordinance if that needs to be addressed.
Hi, anyone else? But there are issues on the west side. I, for one, think that it should be all included in this ordinance. Jude, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, well, I, yeah, well, it's...
Microphone.
Speak up, speak up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got you. All of those properties along the shoreline, of course, are designated to be used in this kind of way.
Yes. And here is your...
All of the properties along the shoreline are designated to be used a certain way. I would be reluctant to place restrictions on them because of issues elsewhere.
And just for the commission's benefit, as we talk about each of these, we're not going to be doing roll call votes, we're looking for consensus, a general agreement in a direction. It may be that you're split on issues, but once we have a sense of what the consensus is, we can move forward. We don't need to get to unanimous approval on each issue.
Well, why do we, who would like to see it separated? Why don't you raise your hand?
I just, a quick question. So I know we're talking about this in vacation rentals as in its entirety, and I know some of the issues brought up on the west side of Gulf, along the shoreline are more about noise, right? Does our noise ordinance already cover the CT zone?
Yes.
Well, what about occupancy? What are we discussing?
I agree. That's in my, in my mind, that's why those, that is more of a business-related, commercial style area of our town. In my mind, it does not react the same way, you know, all the way back on 10th, right? That that's more of a business community up there, and I have no problem in re-looking at that, or looking at that, you know, on its own, once we know, you know, what kind of houses those are. And like I said, we've heard a little bit of the issues, but 95% plus of what we've heard, in my opinion, has been in the neighborhood.
Phil, any comments?
No, I think that that's fine. Those areas can probably be addressed if they present a problem, but I would think that our noise ordinance and some of the other things that we currently have cover those smattering of homes that are over there.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Have there really been any significant complaints about behaviors on that side of Gulf, anyway? I mean, as a resident of that side of Gulf, it's kind of what you expect, so I'm wondering if there's been any sort of community feedback regarding short-term rental behaviors on that side.
I can see that.
From a staff perspective, compared to complaints in the east side of Gulf, very few. You know, we get complaints on occasion that you would expect, we have in a public beach, with people that go down and drink and do other things, but as far as complaints directly related to a vacation rental on a condo, not a lot.
Well, I mean, how about if we have a show of hands, if who would like to have it as a separate ordinance, perhaps, down the road? Why don't you raise your hand?
Mayor, I think just, Mayor, I think rather than talk about separate ordinances or future policy discussions, it should just be right now, presently, what would you like to see done here, and without any commitment to what might happen house wise?
Who would like to not see this part, as far as the east side, the west side of Gulf Boulevard? Okay, and who would like to see the west side included?
I'm not sure I saw where members, I'm not sure I saw where members hand on the board.
I'm not sure I understood the question, sorry.
Do you want to include the west side of Gulf Boulevard in this ordinance that we're creating?
We probably should, just, you know, what's good for the goose.
Mr. Bond, Mr. Bond, we're not good with you.
What's good for the goose, yes.
Okay. Are you clear on that?
My understanding is Member Bond is fine with the scope as it's written.
Okay, and Phil? Okay. I couldn't hear you.
Yes, included.
Okay.
So there seems to be consensus direction to leave the scope as it is. Recall, this is only to help us draft ordinance that will still come before you. Nothing here commits you to a vote in the future. If should you receive additional, have additional thoughts on the matter, that can be addressed with the draft. We proceed with the language as it presently stands.
Randy, before you go on, Chief Davidson, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to clarify on the separation of the ordinances. With the life safety ordinance that we're reviewing at the fire department, strictly on life safety, that's going to apply to all vacation rentals throughout the entire fire district. So if that's any consideration for you.
Thank you, Chief. Randy, if you want to move on.
All right, then, that covers scope. The next item on page three is the enforcement section. I would start with, generally speaking, was there any, was there any feedback on elements of the enforcement side of this that you, as commissioners, would like addressed, amended? General guidance in this section would be appreciated.
Who would like to start?
I'll jump out.
Joe?
Just a couple questions I had in regarding determining the violations, since they obviously carry a fairly substantial penalty.
They could, they could.
Right? I mean, are we talking, you know, this is just me thinking forward, are we talking about someone leaving their trash can out three times during a year, and we take away their license?
So let's, let's take a step back and talk a little bit about just code enforcement process as a whole. I think it's important to know what we're talking about here. The enforcement section that you have here references generally the fine schedule in the code and preserves the city's right in code enforcement. Code enforcement is, has its boundaries set by chapter 162 of the Florida statutes. Under 162, we as a community have the opportunity to send a code enforcement violator to local ordinance violation court. Alternatively, we can have a code compliance magistrate or code enforcement board, and presently, as you've heard from the manager, there is a RFP out for a special magistrate. Your third option in that regard, or necessary, is to file injunctive actions to seek some kind of specific compliance. You see that infrequently, but typically with order houses and things like that where you need some order of compliance. So assuming that the special magistrate position is filled, the way it would work is somebody would receive a notice of violation. They have the option to pay it, not dispute it, or to dispute it. If they dispute the code compliance, the notice of violation, they will have a hearing before the magistrate, where the magistrate would determine whether or not there's been a violation in the first place. When the magistrate makes a determination, depending on the nature of that violation, if it's something that's continuing, they may be given a timeline within which to comply. Hey, you don't have this sign that you need, or some posting, you have until X amount of days to do it, and you, as the violator, have the obligation to notify the city when you've come into compliance. If they come into compliance by that day, no fine. If they come into compliance some day thereafter, the city has the ability to say, hey, they were supposed to come into compliance by the fifth, they didn't come into compliance until the 10th, we would like a fine for those five days. Where they still haven't come into compliance, we would like a fine to begin to accrue until such time as they come into compliance. And then hopefully you get compliance. If for some reason somebody disputes that process, they can appeal the magistrate's decision to a circuit court, and so on, and so on. However, that is the code enforcement process. Member McCall, you were asking more particularly as to the possibility of suspensions, as that's offered as an option for you. Ultimately, you folks would decide the boundaries of that. I don't need, I want to be really clear about what I'm not looking for tonight. I don't need the commission to wordsmith tonight. I don't need you to decide, I want it to read exactly like this. I just want to know what direction you're working in, and we can finesse that to a work product. So what I'd be looking for is, yes, we want suspension on the table, or something like that.
Yeah, for clarity purposes. What this really means is that just because there's an assumed violation, unless somebody pays the ticket, or they're found guilty, they don't have a strike. So in other words, if a deputy goes to a house, for example, and there's an alleged noise problem, and the deputy knocks on the door, and there's immediate compliance, most likely those people are not making a site, so that doesn't count against them. So it's, I paid it, so I'm admitting I'm guilty, or hopefully we have a magistrate. So whatever, if you set a number, that's what would be, not just knock your points.
Good, thank you. Just one clarification. Second, I swear I only have four. As far as the way this particular reads, and I know you don't check the words, but would this be to the property or to the owner? As far as if they, if we would enact something of this nature, would it stay with the property itself, or the owner?
My advice would be you make it property specific in the event there's multiple properties held. I think it comports better with due process, and you're less likely to see issues there. But again, ultimately, that's a decision for you folks. One thing that I, you know, one of the phrases that's been thrown out throughout this process is, is that legal? Is that legal? Well, legal, if we're defining it as preemption, duration, frequency, and prohibition, pretty much everything except three things is legal. Will somebody assert legal challenges to other elements of this, potentially? Will they prevail? I don't know. Depends in part on what we do, how we administer it, and how that affects that individual. The law is nothing if not fact-specific. So I'm not going to unilaterally tell you, if you do this, you'll be totally fine and nothing will happen. But ultimately, I'm supposed to, as your legal counsel, give you advice, give you information, and you decide, as we, as we said during some of the workshops, this is really an exercise in risk tolerance. What you were willing to do in 2017 and 18 may be less than what you're willing to do now. We just need to know what that is.
Okay. And just, that explains the element, and just one other, the middle, kind of the middle paragraph, if we look at this one, as far as from the city of Marathon?
Yes.
Where it references any vacation rental agent, the suspension of their ability to do that. I didn't see that any other, the registration of a vacation rental agent anywhere else in the paperwork as it is in Marathon, they actually end up a license, so.
So if you incorporate that, we would harmonize. Are you saying that terminology doesn't appear elsewhere?
Yeah, well, yeah, you were speaking of a vacation rental agent, but in Marathon, they actually defined it, and you have to have a license for it and all that stuff, but I didn't see that anywhere else.
Yeah, so, and, agree, yes. That is an element, I just gave you wholesale what their language is.
Right, okay, fair enough.
I didn't want to be accused of cherry picking, you know.
Anyone else? So from what I understand, you're asking us to choose, like, if a vacation rental has three violations in a 12-month period, then what should that suspension be?
Actually, my question starts even before that.
Okay.
Do you want suspension as an option?
I do.
Would be my first question.
I do.
If you do, what, what general parameters, and we can come with parameters, just an idea of where, where do you see that going? And again, we can finesse that, but yes, I'd like some... And again, we can finesse that, but yes, I'd like some idea of what you folks think is an appropriate and, and appropriate way to address that.
Well, knowing that we're probably going to look at this ordinance again next year, I would say, you know, 30, 60, 90 days, something like that.
As far as suspension, progressive?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I agree, that makes sense. And is that after multiple violations?
Right, I'd say after three violations, if you're not going to play there, then we'll start with a 30-day.
Is that enforceable?
Violating the ordinance is it.
How? Yeah, I'm just detailing.
I'm not sure I totally understand your question. If we put it in our code, we can administer it. Ultimately, if we're going through, and again, that part of whether or not it's enforceable will be defined by how we structure the part. But if you have it as three adjudicated violations within an X amount of period, three, you know, paid fines or adjudicated violations, we can keep track of the property and how many times it's been cited, whether it's been adjudicated, et cetera, and then present to the special magistrate, hey, this is what we have. We would like, in addition to the fine pursuant to section whatever, whatever of our code, we would like you to consider suspension as a, as a potential penalty. And then ultimately, that would be part of that order.
Commissioner McCall?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that's, you know, one glaring component we were missing from 2018 was allowing the city to actually act for, you know, when there is violations. We hadn't really, we hadn't had that today.
And I would emphasize, just for the benefit of city staff and all present, one of the distinctions here that was different from 2018 to what we're talking about now is an entire certification process. The BTR, we don't have the ability to suspend that way based on that sort of thing. But if you're talking about a license to do business in a particular industry that we're regulating, that's a different analysis, and that's what we're talking about today. So I think I have your clarity on the enforcement side. If the commission's prepared to move on, unless there's additional questions, I don't know if you reach out for it. Commissioner McCall?
Yeah, my only, my clarification was exactly that, that it's, there is a process, right? If there's a complaint, it's not just, oh wait, there's one, right? But there's actually a process for it to go through.
And that's, that is a function of our due process.
I have no problem with that.
I just want to clarify for the record, so they're looking at the suspension after three adjudicated or paid four violations with 30, 60, 90 days.
Presently, that's the direction we're going in, yes. And we can confirm with our respective notes going forward. With that, are there any other questions on the enforcement side? The next item is appeals. I don't need your input there. That is a restatement of the law, that a special magistrate's decision is appealable to a circuit court. The next element is registration required. Sort of, some of the discussion thus far has sort of presumed your input on this, but, and, and the dates are highlighted in blue, not quite yellow, because that's going to be informed by how this process moves along. But generally, the question is, do you as a commission wish to, you know, we talked about this in 2017 and 18 as a commission, recognizing it wasn't all the same players, but you still exist as a body. Whether we wanted to have our own independent registration process at the time, the commission did not. My sense is that the will of the community has changed in that regard, but I want to make sure we're clear on that. Is there any opposition, I think is probably a better way to phrase it, is there any opposition to having an independent registration process?
Administered by whom?
The city. The city, its staff, the, yeah, just that. With that, the next, the next section is a place where we are taking some specific, excuse me, seeking some specific input on vacation rental registration fees. What fees you wish to charge, in what quantum, what amount are we, are we looking at? The first one is the application fee for an initial certificate of registration. You may recall from our previous workshops on this that my only advice to you is that this fee is not a profit maneuver. This fee is not a penalty. This fee is designed to capture the administrative costs of the bureaucracy that we're creating, right? The needs of inspections, printing materials, disseminating them, et cetera. And so what we, what it says in there, you're given the range of 200 to 500. Ultimately, that's your call. That range was just based on, here's what we're seeing out there. It was not an advice that you pick one number or the other. Again, it was just, here's what we're seeing as sort of a mean, median, and mode of the numbers in the, in the regulations we've seen. So are there, is there any input from the commission on the application fee that you would think appropriate?
I have a question on that. Do we have the staff provided or thought about what the actual cost of doing this kind of business would be so that we can arrive at comfortable?
I would defer to your manager in that regard.
Short answer is no. You know, the reason why we didn't do it is that you first had to determine whether you were going to apply the new ordinance to the area that we had or the whole city. I can tell you, in discussions with the host compliance company, they estimate citywide that we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,900 vacation rentals that are operating in the city. That's both sides of the road and in the, in the business district. So you can do the math in your head. Our, our budget right now in code enforcement is around, I think, around $160,000. We're about to pick up a special magistrate in Lake Harrison, in Holmes Beach. They budget about $150,000 a year for a magistrate. So it takes a good bit of money. And I've already mentioned to you, you know, for the next foreseeable future, next few months, staff-wise, we're okay, because we have two code people. A finance person that's involved and an administrative assistant that's up front. And then we'll have help and assistance from our department, the county. And plus, by the time we go through the public hearing process to adopt an ordinance, we're well into the later part of the year, into the summer. So we'll just be getting everything set up and we're only going to go with inspections and those kind of things. And that's during our budget process, and then I'll be in a better position. So it's, I wanted to just give you that information. It's, you know, it's kind of what we're looking at, is numbers in that ballpark. So that's why we use the 200 divided by 100 range. And that's backed along the information that y'all have looked at and been sent to us. And that's probably about the money we need to be in to cover the, generally to cover the cost.
What does the host compliance software cost?
Well, I'm negotiating that right now. We're trying to piggyback on the Holmes Beach contract. Their contract is about $35,000 a year. If we had to put it out for an RFP, it's going to be more than that. I'm trying to work my way into somebody else's contract. But we're close on that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that any money that we're spending to manage these short-term rentals is self-funding, that we're not using any taxpayer dollars in order to manage these.
Does anyone have a number?
$495. $495. Initial registration.
I had put 400. When we had talked the other day, I had added up some of the, the things that Greg had brought to the table. We talked about, and I, my thought was 400.
Honestly, Denise, we just, we just rolled our management up from 280 properties to 1,900. The costs are not going to be, I mean, they're always going to be over, we think. As Randy already said, it's not a moneymaker. But I 100% agree with Denise. You know, this is venturing into a part of the city managing property. You know, it shouldn't rely on our current budget.
Yeah, and I ultimately see that we're going to need an entire short-term rental division inside the city. Because this is not getting smaller, it's getting bigger. Sorry, Greg.
What kind of, what kind of fee are you, any ideas so that we can kind of get this going? Any, I'm asking for any ideas as far as fees from the rest of the commission? You've heard two of us.
I just think that we're just sort of grabbing numbers out of thin air right now.
Well, you know, what we're doing is, please.
I mean, without any.
Well, Greg explained the cost of
Between two and five.
Well, no, that, what we're going to be paying those for, so the special magistrate will be approximately $160,000. And then the software will, that, that, let's say 200,000 for that. So we were kind of, that was where we were coming up with those numbers.
I get it, I'm just trying to work through them.
Do you want to come back with us, or let you feel that?
No, we're, we're very comparable.
Please.
We're very comparable to the size staff that Holmes Beach has. They have, they have five people in their code enforcement division. They do more than vacation rentals. So I'm confident with the staff we currently have, with the, with the inspection work that the fire department will do, and with the building, county building staff that go into this, we're okay. What we're going to have to look at closely is, just based on the volume and the paperwork involving us, on the finance, technical end of it, that may be where we need to look at it. One thing you have to remember is, when you talk numbers, Holmes Beach charges 495, the initial fee, or they charge 495 every two years. So it's really about an average of about 200, a little over $200 a year that they charge. So the staff size is comparable, the city size is comparable. They have all the vacation rentals that we, that we do. And their chief code enforcement person has been in all 4,000, they have over 4,000 vacation rentals. He's been in every one of them. So I'm comfortable with, that's why we gave the number between 200 and 500. Is it, because you have to remember, they did theirs on a two-year renewal at 495.
And they're, they're in either the whole property?
I'm sorry.
Is that per unit or per property?
That's per certificate, I don't know a little bit.
Per BTR.
For registration. Yeah, for registration.
Yeah, I go?
Free registration.
And one other comment I'll make on this, because it's in the same section, is that, you know, you want to make the fee, whatever it is, you want to make it high enough. Because one of the things I think is not cost-effective is, and some cities have it, some cities don't, is where you have different fees for like the first inspection, the second inspection, the third. When you get into all that, by the time you do the math, you, you're not safe or broke even because there's paperwork involved, all that in that. So you just need to make, in my opinion, you just make the registration fee high enough where it generally covers the cost of the business. And one other thing I was going to say was that, taking in consideration the different components that, since we've been using this comparison, Holmes Beach, there, but with everything added together, $610,000 is what they're spending for code enforcement. And those folks do more than vacation rentals like our people continue to do.
Any other thoughts on fees, Commissioner McCall?
Yeah, I got, I mean, I got no problem with your 400, to be honest. Because as we all know, any budget, your costs are going to be more than everything. Now, the question I have is the one above. And you said it's either in ordinance or separate. Does that change if we find that our costs are higher and/or lower? Would that be modified?
Thank you, thank you for calling that out. What you noted is, is in the section heading, it has in ordinance versus separate resolution for the registration rental fee. One of the things that you see more in local government is where you have fee schedules, that those fee schedules are put in resolution because a resolution is easier to amend. It's not a first and second reading, it's a resolution. We bring it up at the next meeting if we need to make it 415 or 210 or whatever the number is. You can change it more easily. So that's more of a drafter's note on our end, and I can have that discussion with staff. Either way, for us, it's really just going to come down to, for me, more importantly, from the commission, what I'm looking for is whether or not, one, we've already agreed to have a registration, so that makes sense. So should we have a fee? The answer seems to be yes. What is that fee is what I'm looking for at this point. More broadly?
Raise your hand.
I would go along with 400, understanding that after a year passes, we'll have real numbers to go back on and to see where we are in the scheme of things. And that, that second year can be adjusted.
Is, yeah, the, the follow-up years are, what is the, what is the plan of those?
There's not a plan right now, since we haven't started. But I would say, if there was an intention to revisit them, we would go through the legislative process of doing that. And that would come first from whether the commission's getting feedback on that, or staff is saying, hey, we're buried under our staff, or hey, we're getting surpluses that we don't need and it's not capturing our actual needs. But then it would just be the legislative process, whether it's a resolution we do on one reading or ordinance on two, with the add in paper and hearings and everything. But presently, right now, I have member McCall, member Mayor Kennedy, and member Hannah each at 400. That's a consensus unless I've mischaracterized anything you've said.
Can we pick the renewal fee as well? Can we just put this thing to bed? Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, Ken.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that, too, I just, I was starting with that, yes. The initial registration fee is, let's, for purposes of the discussion going forward, we have consensus at 400 on the initial, if you wish to have a renewal fee different, what is the amount for that?
250.
Were you at four or 495?
I was at 495.
495, so.
Sorry, you're five. Please.
Like an option.
No, I just want to make sure the consensus, consensus, you know. Do we want to do a follow-up fee? Like an annual renewal?
Yes, there is, yes.
So that is, that is?
That's what we're discussing.
No, no, I just want to say, do we want to do a follow-up? Okay.
In my opinion, they're the same. We go through the same work, the registration's going to be done every single year, the inspection's going to be done every year. I mean, you're doing business. I pay my business tax receipt every year, it is what it is. It's part of doing business. I don't, I wouldn't think a discount, just because you've been through the process once. We're going to, the staff still has to look at your drawings, they still have to do everything. All that stuff's going to be done with the registration. So I don't see a discount reason there, personally.
I'll agree with that.
So the consensus seems to be one, one fee, eight registration fee. It is 400 for purposes of the initial draft, and we would move forward. Your manager suggested that you not, there be no need for re-inspection fees. I think based on your consensus direction that you've sort of aligned that way.
Correct.
So we can strike that element of it. Moving on, the fifth page is vacation rental registration. There's an ABC with subparts, so let's just start on page five. Did any of you have any questions or notes there?
Very good, you can kind of remind me of current parking.
Yeah.
And we voted last year, right, for no permit and all that stuff, for not, you know, for street parking. My suggestion kind of depends on what the occupancy people think. So I'm a little ahead of curve on the question.
Yeah, so the hard thing, and I suspect it, and it's sort of signaled to you in the draft, where I suspect the most conversation will likely happen. First was going to be the fees, second was going to be occupancy, and third was going to be parking. I recognize that there's elements here that relate to parking. My suggestion to you, in the interest of getting through the document, is that we do take it sequentially, unless you feel that those things need to be resolved for you to do anything else, in which case, let's jump to occupancy, jump to parking, and then come back. I think that's, either way, makes sense. We hold off on those issues until we get to that page, or we address those two issues because from them will flow so many other answers for you as policymakers. So I think that would be, that's a decision point for you guys procedurally right now. How do you want to approach that?
Let, let's just go through where we're at at this moment, okay? And is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, let's, let's. Okay, let's, let's go through where we're at.
So, and all...
Keep that comment, though, in, Joe, keep that comment, so that we get some more, okay?
Yep. And so, to the extent there's requirements here that say, you know, subject to parking restrictions, we'll note that, we'll, we'll do a, a review to make sure we capture that then, so we don't bog ourselves down presently in numbers of spots. And while it says a map of off-street, but we don't know if we're gonna require off-street, let's just leave that flag for the time being. If you have questions on other elements on page five of twenty, please let me know.
Are we asking for their links on VRBO and Airbnb?
You tell me.
That's a good question. I think we do, I think we ought to have the links of where their ads are.
So, Mr. McCall's response to that was, I think that's what the host compliance company software does. The challenge with the, the links is, to the extent those are, are, are subject to change, constantly making sure our records are, are consistent may be a challenge.
And if they're abiding by the ordinance, ordinance, they should not have a link up on our website. That's what host compliance does, is that the host, the host compliance company literally has access to like eighty platforms, so that's where we would, we would give that information, our monthly report would have that information from there.
So, apart from Commissioner Houseford's question, are there, it doesn't seem like there's any specific questions to the content of page five?
I, I do have one.
Okay.
The twenty-four hour, we already have that in, in our registration that we have now, number three under C.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to clarify that someone is out of the area, and cannot be reached, that they, there is a, they can have another contact number for someone else.
The, the way this is written, there is always a designated responsible party. There can only be one Highlander, there's only one designated responsible party at a time, um, as, as written, so that we avoid a, here's the phone tree of people we'd like you to contact, you call Judy, then Sally, and everybody else. But the way it's written, the designated responsible party is there, so that a property owner does not have to worry about where they are at any given time.
Okay.
If their designated responsible party is not available, then their designated responsible party is not compliant, and they need to identify for us who that person is in those instances.
Correct. So, if they, I, I'm just, I just want to make clear that there is a person, so that if they're, you're saying that, I, I, I want them to be able to have another person that can be there in case they're out of the country, they're out of town, someone that we can get, so...
What, you're using a pronoun without an accent, so you're a little confused, when you keep saying "they", are you meaning the property owner?
Yes, yes.
Yes, the property owner identifies a second party.
Okay.
The designated responsible party.
Okay.
And that person is oftentimes a management company, or somebody of the sort with a staff, or, or a number of, or a number of ones, but the designated responsible party will, will, as required by our code presently, be available to respond to any instance.
And it can be a person. It doesn't necessarily have, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a company, or to be a person that they trust with their property. You know, you, you said, I just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't care who it is, we just do it, and I ain't gonna...
All right, that's clear now, okay, that was one of my questions.
So, uh, with, absent that question, is there anything on page six? There's, there's, you know, we've gone through one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight requirements that were there, some that may need to be revisited, based on other elements. So, on nine through sixteen, are there any of those elements that you wish to remove? Anything you wish to add to that list, as, as you reach the end of that list?
We all have cell phones, we need the landline.
Hey, hey, we're not there yet, okay?
Using the word residential, and these under five oh nine are primarily commercial properties, should that be changed?
No, I, 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 I will, I will tell you that the, the construct of that, it is, it is a single-family home. If there is a, I will just, as the law treats those, you're, presuming we're still in an RM one, RM two, I understand CT is not necessarily a, a single-family home. But if you are just on, in one of the fingers back here, in a house, if that goes on the market tomorrow, it's sold as a single-family home. Um, it is a resident, it is, is zoned in residential property, its future land use designation is residential, and the law treats it, whether fiction or not, and that, it's not my construct, it's legal world we're operating in, that is a residential property.
So, usage has nothing to do with it, now it's being used?
Well, use is, I will tell you that as far back as, and, and I know I've had this discussion with at least one of you, that a landlord owning and leasing property for a specified period of time is not a new legal construct, and that hasn't historically rendered every house a commercial property, just because you have a tenant, whether they be for six months or six days. Um, you're still using it for a commercial purpose, you're generating income from it, oftentimes in excess of whatever your leverage debts are on that property, as an income-producing property, and so, this is still that, is the way the world, the legal world is looking at that, it's just for, at a, at a higher intensity and density. But I would tell you that my advice is that the language there is deliberate as it is, and calling it differently isn't really going to change that construct. That's my advice, but ultimately, you folks are policymakers.
Captain Liner, will you address number eleven, the landline, for us?
All right. Am I on?
Number eleven.
Is it close enough?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, ma'am, which page am I on?
We're on page six of twenty, she was referencing the...
Number eleven.
The requirement that an application must provide a phone number associated with the landline telephone required, and I think her question was, as a first responder, uh, does having a landline improve, or, or in any way, impact services that your, uh, your organization can provide?
And one thing before you answer, one thing that I did today was, uh, contacted Captain Liner, and he agreed to contact the director of the county's nine-one-one program. So, what was the result of?
Well, I talked to our communications personnel, uh, same, same difference, they're both in the same office. Today, what we have, what they use now, I mean, it's getting better by each day. What we used in the past, sometimes we'd be off by like a mile. But what they do now is they have some type of software, that they run it through and triangulate. So, if you have a cellphone call, like the landline obviously is tied to the address. If you have a cellphone caller at the address, it's getting better each day, and it's good today. What it does is, we use software to triangulate where the caller's calling from, and that takes us to wherever the house they're at. There's always different things and stuff, but in talking to the other captain, it, it works well, so there's really no differentiation from our response type thing. The only concern I would have would be, obviously, if somebody called that's unfamiliar with the area, and doesn't know where they're at, can't help find them. And talking to them, they triangulate, signal, and we'd be able to find them. So, that's kind of the answer I got from the people that answer the nine-one-one calls all the time.
Chief Davidson, do you want to add anything as far as fire, does it matter? What are, what are your thoughts?
No, exactly what the captain says, what I agree with. And, you know, I talked to Greg today as well, and, you know, my opinion, most people have cell phones, and having a landline doesn't necessarily add value to the vacation rentals. Having a way to call nine-one-one does, but for the majority of the people, everybody has cell phones, and unless there's something that says you must, you know, a law that says you must have a landline, then, from the fire perspective, emergency call nine-one-one, I would be satisfied to not have a landline. I wouldn't make it a requirement from the nine-one-one side of this.
Does anyone want to address that?
Aren't we trying to get rid of telephone poles? Anyone else?
I, I would say strike it, I don't think we need it.
All right, thank you.
So, requirement eleven is stricken, are there any others you wish to strike or add? Within that list of sixteen, just to keep us going chronologically?
I feel like I'm talking all over your mind.
Commissioner McCall?
I'm really not understanding fifteen. And, like you just pointed out, the house is a house, it's a house, right? But how this, I mean, how does the ADA come into this component? Cause I looked at DPVR, as far as their registration, that was actually listed on something that they don't control, they stated that. I'm, don't really know what benefit having an owner attest that their house meets ADA does, besides possibly put them in legal jeopardy down the road, if, if it's not for some reason. Interesting.
So, Member McCall's expressed some concern about the language in, in fifteen, requiring some kind of attestation to ADA, um, and there is a correlating provision elsewhere, um, of having ADA applied where applicable, or, you know, ADA restriction where applicable. Ultimately, um, the ADA is, is, you know, um, whether or not it's administered as part of this program, I think is, is certainly within your ability to address, and, um, it, if it applies, and again, I, I, I'm not going to tell you that this means it retroactively applies to every property, there are, that analysis has not been done. The question would be more, do you wish to inject this issue into the regulatory scheme? It's not advice that you do or don't, it's ultimately your call.
And just, my thought process is, so, under this provision, say we do. Does that mean, you know, any vacation rental steps is going to have to put a ramp up? Are we gonna have easement problems, or we're gonna have variance problems? Cause we've run into this before, where people have been in wheelchairs and so forth. Um, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I was here, I was on planning and zoning, and it did not get passed, and that gentleman actually needed a ramp to get him to his own house, but because it was on, in our easement problem, we couldn't get it beforehand.
And that got addressed to you, straight up, with accommodation, yes.
But, yes, so, I mean, I, I understand this, and it's not just a bar in your shower, you know? I mean, if the, if the vacation, in my mind, if the vacation rental owner wants to offer that, or, and as well they should, you know, for folks with disabilities, you know, then that's their choice, but I would, like I say, I hate to see ramps go up on, you know, two-hundred-and-eighty houses around them, when their, when their tenant may or may not need it.
Well, and then does that also mean that they can't pass inspection if they don't have?
Right.
I'm gonna have, Greg and I had a discussion about it last, yesterday, and so, why don't you just, yeah, add to that?
The long and the short of this conversation is, is the ADA requirements, based on the preliminary information that we've received from the county, is gonna be based on the occupancy limit that you place on houses. There's, in the building official world, there's some general thresholds of the number of people in a structure, in this case, in a residential unit. And that's really gonna dictate that. So, there's really no reason today, tonight, to get into weeds over ADA, because either ADA is gonna be required or not, that's gonna be based on inspection in the field, and verifying the number of bedrooms, and then, like I said, tied back to whatever y'all, whatever the cap is for the number of people in a house.
And you, as a commission, have the ability to decide whether you want this language in here or not?
I move to strike it.
So, these two members, is there, is there a third member who's inclined in that direction?
Yes, because I think it's gonna be brought up with, with the, the next part, so, I'm fine with that.
Okay, number fifteen will be stricken. That leaves only one more on the list, unless we're, uh, it's, at least, assuming we're going chronologically, and I want to make clear, too, is there, not just removing, is there anything you wish to add, or anything that was not addressed in this list of, of requirements here?
I'm sorry, just one other thing on sixteen.
Apology, Mr. Jack.
I know we initially spoke about this, and there are a lot of cities that do require the addendum to the lease that I think addresses number sixteen, I think it needs to be there, but is there a way to incorporate that to where it's actually on the lease that the client, or that the tenants are signing? I know there's other, I know Xanomaria and a couple other ones actually, the city produced basically an addendum to the lease that needs to be that the, the tenants are actually signing.
It would be, it would lay out what the rules are, is what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, everybody knows.
So, you're saying in addition, any postings on the property incorporating into the lease documents, any, any, any rental documents, uh, or lease agreements?
Or a certain rental shall include. Yeah, and I've seen it on, you know, two or three out of the five that we've looked at, I don't know.
Okay.
Questioner, would that also be any and all occupants? Or just the person who signs the initial, it's like, if I want to rent a house somewhere, I sign, and then I bring my friends?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Your question is, are we going to make sure that an operator gets, somehow gets it to every person who walks through the door threshold, beyond the posting that'll be on the property?
They're posting on the property.
It's fine, they need, they need to acknowledge they've seen it, right, is what I'm coming at. Just an initial, yeah, okay, fine, we're, we're clear on that.
I would think that would be initial or sign by the person who saw, and contract the lease, the, the house, but not by the whole, not by anybody.
I, I don't agree with, but let's, to choice the question, that's fine.
Is there consensus to add that, uh, element as a, as part of the lease agreement, though, to the extent that that's...
Yeah.
Denise, are you... Yeah, I would agree with that, I mean, at least find a way to educate everybody that's gonna stay there.
Member Bond, did you have anything you wish to add on that?
Yeah.
The next statement is just a pronouncement that we're not gonna be processing in complete forms, and ultimately, there is a, a line there for special magistrate, so commissions to appeal. My, my advice to you is you leave that in the hands of this, of the special magistrate. If there's an appeal to administer that, I put it there to make sure you knew. Absent a magistrate, that's how that some communities do it, in case you guys had, for some reason during this discourse, we didn't work that. That being the case, I would just leave that to special magistrate, and, and D on the bottom of page six. That takes us to the next, uh, provision, modification and change of ownership of vacation rental registration. Basically, is an amendment of a vacation rental regist, registration application is necessary when there's a change of ownership. And it goes through, um, what, what amendments, um, if there's some kind of, if they're changing elements of their rental registration, not a change in ownership, sorry, modifying the structure or something of the sort, that they need to update their documents with us. Let's say you put on an addition, or something like that, you need to tell us. Um, if you're changing the designated responsible party, hey, we used ABC Management Company, you want to use Acme, they need to tell us. That's what's there, any questions there? The next one is the duration of registrations. Manager Mims talked a little bit about how in another community, they do two-year intervals. Some communities do one-year interval, you've already established, whatever the interval is, the fee's gonna be the same. Your fee presently is four hundred, do you wish to make this a annual, or biannual, or, sorry, one year or two years? How do you wish to address that?
One year.
One year.
If I, if I can, on this, one of the things that, I'm gonna have to just go on and decide this tonight, we can, we can work on it in the draft document, you know, or finish, is that, right now, the BTR license program is set up where those are all done at the same time, they're done, where they're due around October the first. One of the things that I want to have further discussion with our finance director about it, is whether, if you come in and you get a certificate, you meet all the requirements, and you can be licensed, whether that person's license starts from the day they get it, or there's like a graduated, you know, a fee schedule, probably broken out by quarter, where if you're in the third quarter, you place a certain percentage. So, I just want to make you aware that, given the possibility, we don't have to figure that out tonight. When we come back with the ordinance, it'll either be tied to the same schedule that we're under for BTR, or it'll be tied to its own schedule, where you're tied, your year starts, you're actually handed the license, but I just need to have one more conversation with staff about that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think it makes more sense to bill it from the actual moment they get their registration, and then that same day next year, rather than try to bill them all in one day.
So, so generally, apart from the administrative element of it, um, it seems like the consensus is one-year registrations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that, that flows to the next one, they must renew annually. Whether, how that's phrased, where it says prior to the expiration date of the previous rental registration, what that expiration date will be part, will be informed by administratively, what you decide in that regard going forward. The next is the inspection regime. By the way, as we go through this, I want to be very clear, any global... By the way, as we go through this, I want to be very clear, any global edits you've given, for example, you've stricken the requirement for a landline, you've stricken the ADA, so any references to those throughout will be removed going forward, they won't stay in there, but just not in the other section, so. With that in mind, was there, were there any concerns on how the inspection section was drafted, any of its contents, or anything in there that, having reviewed it, you wish to address separately?
Is there a minute? Or?
Well, it still says phone line in there.
I have not changed the draft in intervening from it, that's your correct. But, apart from that, is there any, are there any comments on page eight? That has the sale of the vacation rental property requiring a new registration within thirty days, a vested rights waiver that's more of a legal phrasing there, rendering it a violation to give false information and misrepresentations in the application process, and then the next one, we'll count that starting on the next page. Anything else there you have concerns about on page eight?
Of course.
It's always going to be Joe.
It's going to be Joe, and this is definitely going to show my age, but I see weddings, but I know bachelor and bachelorette parties were a huge concern if we're, I mean, we're kind of naming events.
Oh, so you're on the advertising?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on.
Before we get to that, before we get to the advertising, just because that is largely also on the other one, I want to make sure nothing else above that seems to be an issue. So, with that, you're seeing, we have a list there, we can, that list is non exhaustive.
Exactly.
It's more of a such as, not specifically these. We can call, we can call that out if we want to make sure, you know, bachelor parties or bachelorette parties are added, the list is, they're probably not called anymore, but, I mean, yeah, pardon.
But, yeah, it was just something, some of the feedback we got from the public, I did, you know, kind of pick up on that, and enduring public comment, those were two, those are two large things, but I don't know if that can be done more in general, where we're not naming what's happening, or it needs to be more specific.
Greg, there's a note here on reconciling the temporary use permit, did you want to address that?
Under the current city code, there's a separate section entitled temporary use permit. Throughout the city, whether it's in a commercial district or a residential district, if you're going to have a gathering of more than fifty people, the city code says that you have to apply for a temporary use permit. It's also the same section where if you're going to do commercial filming, like film production, so there's a whole temporary use section, and I just want to bring that to your attention, because I know there's been suggestions and emails about the problems associated with large events. I would just say, from an administrative standpoint, early, middle of last year, when we started to have these discussions about issues in the residential areas, and we don't get a lot to begin with, I think I had a couple that I did not approve. There was one company that wanted to occupy a house in a certain location, do some filming there, and then film on the beach. I approved their film permit for the beach, I did not approve their request for the house they were going to lease, I think as a result, they'd leased the house. So, I do want to provide the commission that there is a temporary use, and one of the things that you consider, and it's been suggested, is, is it relates specifically to vacation rental, you can leave it the way it is, or you can change it, whether temporary use permits or not, you know, permit adoption for a house that's being used as a vacation rental. But that's, fifty is the threshold, that ordinance was here before I got here. Most of the ones that I process or I look at are weddings on the beach, and it's usually what location they are, and what the setup's going to be, and those kind of things, but gatherings are governed currently by the temporary use permit section.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, listen to that.
Anything else in the vacation section? I mean, sorry, not the vacation section, that's what we're talking about, right? In the advertising section?
We're on the halfway through there.
Seeing none. The next part is the duties of the vacation rental owner and responsible person, so this goes into some of those questions you've been asking earlier, Mayor, and again, if there's reference to a landline in here, my apologies for my dereliction and procrastination, but other than that, are there any, are there any concerns as to the duties of the vacation rental owner and the responsible person, or anything you wish to add that was not addressed in the draft? There's a few of them, they are one, two, three, and then A through G, or, A through G, or maybe, yeah, there's A through G as well. Some of those have specific flags on them, we just wanted to make sure, one of those was just a test to make sure you read the whole thing, but there's the ID requirement and a few others that are flagged. Just before we move on from page ten, were there any concerns in any of that content? Seeing?
Of course I do.
I mean, of course.
Absolutely. And, yeah, my, I travel extensively, or not extensively, but a lot. I'd like to hear maybe his opinion on the photo ID of all parties.
Subsection C?
I'm sorry, I should probably start with that.
I agree, Joe, it's intrusive.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, I've rented across the country many times. I haven't run into this yet. Yeah, I just, I'm not sure what the advantage, I mean, if there's an altercation, or something, or an issue, obviously, Captain Meyer, his team's going to show up, they're going to I'm not, yeah, I just, I just, yeah, I just don't see it. So, you're going to have, you're going to have an owner hold somebody's driver's license for two years? In today's day and age?
When you can't even hold somebody's credit card information.
Right. Same idea.
Same idea.
I have your ID.
Yeah. Commissioner Bond, any comments on that?
Yeah, when it says the occupant, is that, when it says the occupant, is that every single person of great age that's in this building?
Yes.
As part of the original?
Yeah, that's a lot.
I'll make a motion.
I mean, that includes, like, people's kids, you know?
Well, they're eighteen.
I'll make a motion to take that part out.
Okay. So, I remember Houseberg has recommended to take it out, is there consensus to join in that regard?
Obviously, yes.
That's two?
Yeah.
Okay, so subsection C will be removed in the draft. Were there any other points of input on page ten?
Nope.
I mean, is there anybody else to look at? All right, we are, in the famous words of Bon Jovi, we're halfway there. So, we're now on page eleven, standards and requirements for vacation rentals. Standards and requirements set forth in this article shall apply to rental use and occupancy of vacation rentals in the city. The first item on this is occupancy. Given the particular attention placed on this, rather than put you in the position of looking at one, saying, that staff has sort of pushed you in that direction, we've given you a sampling based on, a lot of the names that we saw raised as examples are desirable by members of the community, by, you know, in communities people are otherwise familiar with, so you have examples of how it reads in Anne Maria, Flagler County, Holmes Beach, Indian Harbor Beach, Marathon County, Reddington Beach, Sarasota, and other elements. The one thing I want to make very clear to you as we go through this, while it's set up in a way that you could say, I like this one, or I don't, or I like that one, you can mix and match. Say, I like this element of Holmes Beaches, but I also like this element, we just need the policy direction from you. I recognize that this is one of the issues that's got more attention, so I wanted to make sure you had as much information as possible as you approached us.
Who wants to start on this?
I'm really leaning towards like a two per bedroom, and then a max of ten.
Just from my personal opinion, than the ones that I've read, I'm closer to the Flagler, the two per bedroom plus two. We're still a beach community that likes children. Yeah, there's a pullout couch, I mean, it is what it is. We've been talking about inspections, some of the things that everybody's talked about and we've heard from, there's possible illegal bedrooms, you know, things of that nature that have been built these houses and made them, you know, more bedrooms than they should have, than the county thinks they should have. That's going to be rectified with inspections, right? A three-bedroom will actually be a three-bedroom, and in my personal opinion, I mean, that's not bad, I mean, two people per bedroom, the kids sleep in the living room on a pullout. You know, I do have, kind of walking in here, my thought process was ten also, or lesser of the two, right?
George left, right?
Two plus two or less, since we are looking at the CT now, that's where my conflict is.
And as you look at that, I do want to note that in some of the examples that you were given, the communities do, say, in this district, there's lock, you can see restriction, in this other more intense district, there's another, I believe it's, Flagler Counties has ten in one district, sixteen in a more traditional tourist district. I'm not suggesting that as a number, I'm just showing you that you can make that delineation if that's your sticking point, you have that option as a policymaker.
Three numbers, do you throw in?
Yes.
I'll do two per bedroom, a pullout couch, and a maximum of eight.
So, yours is a two per bedroom plus two, max eight?
Which is the second.
Yeah.
For three bedrooms?
For three bedrooms.
If it's three bedrooms, yeah.
What if it's four?
But if it's a, if it's a five-bedroom, you're still at a max eight, I want to make sure we're clear, the way that we're, it's being.
Okay, please.
Sorry.
No apology necessary, I'm just trying to get input.
Yeah, appreciate it.
One of the questions that was brought up, one is children under six, and how do they, how does that work? I was looking myself at Sarasota, because they have a specific guidelines where children are concerned.
I agree with that, I'm just concerned with enforcement or management, how do we determine and how do they advertise that?
Well, and one of the things when I talked to Randy about that was, you know, Indian Harbor actually was closer, and it was cleaner, you know, than to have everything from Sarasota, where, you know, it was pretty much saying the same thing, but it was cleaner.
That was definitely your input on it, that they are similar in their effective results. Whether or not there's a children's restriction is a policy decision for you folks, and I don't know if, to the extent you've raised an administrative concern, I don't know if the manager cares to weigh in on that, but the, ultimately, it's up to you folks what you want.
Well, I think one thing we agree on is that two per bedroom.
Right. I don't know.
You don't know two per bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have at least three council members who are at two per bedroom, two of them have stated two per bedroom plus two. I don't have your input, Matt, Mayor, or Member Bonds' input.
I haven't provided one yet. I've done with lock, traveling with kids, and that's really, in a scenario like this, I mean, we can look at the bachelor party thing and all of that, but most people aren't traveling in that way, and I want to make sure that we're not penalizing people for just, yeah, yeah, for being a family rather than a bunch of drunken dudes. And I'm not saying that I disagree with two, I just, I can't just jump right into it, that's all.
Well, I think what we're trying to decide is what the maximum is then, Joe, because, Jude, you could still put, you know, four adults and six kids in there. There's blowout mattresses, some of these, I know they have more than just two beds in one room.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's what we come up against, is the intention versus the reality.
I mean, but we're not here to regulate little kids having fun here.
No, exactly. So, you guys like two, two people per bedroom plus two in living room? What about the game room?
So, the way it's written, it won't be by room, the count would ordinary, the way you see that regulation typically administered, it's two per bedroom plus two. Where they sleep is sort of besides the point, if it's a game room, a bonus room, a movie room, it's two per bedroom plus two is how that construct is written for counting, and the way other elements of the code will read, based in the current draft that you guys, the folks are moving through, when they're issued a certificate, their vacation rental certificate, it will state, based on whatever mathematical formula you folks devise, max occupancy X. And so, that's, that's what we're trying to write, is solve for X.
I just, I mean, maybe Greg can answer, I just don't, I'm going to give a little clarification, I just don't know how we would administer the under six, because if we're using the software to crawl the internet, it's going to be looking for twelve occupancy, right? I mean, or it's going to be looking for whatever the number is out there.
Yeah, it's, from an administrative standpoint, whatever the max is, it's easier just to have a max total, because getting into children or teenagers or senior citizens, you know, that's complicated, so just decide what you, what the cap and max is, and just leave it that way.
Just throwing out there, my other concern, like I say, since we're including the CT in this, say there's a beach house with six bedrooms, right? Tell us, you know, six couples can't come down and stay in the house, right? If you put it at ten, or you put it at whatever.
Two per bedroom.
Eight, eight, please.
Right? I mean, if you put, that's, that's where my concern is, so for a larger home, which we don't have that many, we probably have some back here, but for a larger home on the beach side.
It's been designed.
It's been designed with over, say, say the number of ten, just for discussion, and it does have, it's a six-bedroom house, however, we're taking away a bedroom.
Well, and to be clear, you don't have, each of you have sort of talked of where you're, you said this sort of two per bedroom and max X, you don't have to have a max X, your max X can't just flow from the number of bedrooms if you so desire. All those options exist, and every version of this construct exists, so that you could say, as you've seen in some communities, it's two times two plus two, end of question, it just flows from the number of bedrooms, and a lot of communities have done it that way, some have said, it flows from the number of bedrooms, but even if you build so many bedrooms, we wish to limit you to this. If you have a concern about one district over the other, you can regulate for that. We, again, I just want to make sure you're clear, that you're not quite backed into the corner here, you do have options regulated. You're talking about a max, you can also have, as you see in the Holmes Beach construct, there's also a minimum. A two-bedroom would only, by a two per bedroom, would only get up to four, so they say minimum six, right? A two-bedroom gets to be six, if you wish to add that, and say, well, that's not really what our concern is, so we'll allow for that being the floor and this being the ceiling, if you wish to do that. Again, all of those options are there for you. Again, all of those options are there for you.
Just, just my opinion, we have to have a cap.
I agree.
If we don't, somebody's going to come in here and build a ten-bedroom house, right?
Like with the beach.
Let's be honest, yeah, yeah, let's be honest, right? You're just opening the door at that point, so there has to be a reasonable amount.
So where's your happy place? Is it eight or ten, twelve? Let's move on.
Yeah, like I said before, I'm ten, I'm two plus two, cap ten.
Okay. I'm with you. Jude?
I'm a little higher than that.
But I would like to see, I would like to see the CT separate. So, I mean, I guess, I don't know about the house. I wouldn't say. So, Member Bond indicated that while his inclination might be a high number, you're fine at the ten, is there any other, Mayor, do you have anything you wish to add to it or make your point known?
I'll go with, I'll go with that. I'm a little higher myself. But, you know, I mean, we're talking about bedrooms, we're talking about bedrooms, and we have very few, but I do think there has to be a cap or so.
I mean, just from my own experience, I live in what used to be a vacation rental, and it's got a ridiculous number of bedrooms and bathrooms, they're all very small. But the fact is, is that I couldn't, that this wouldn't conform if I wanted to rent my home, you know? And so, and I don't care, because that's not what my goal is, right? But I don't want to deny anybody else the right to do what they need to do with their property and the amount of space they have. If you have a lot of space, ten people ain't much. So I'm very, how many, how many of you have families who are within ten?
No, no. No. Please, please.
No, I mean, my family, my parents just came in, and there were nine of us in the house, you know, it's just, it doesn't take that many people to hit ten. I just think ten is too low for a max. Yeah, I mean, the bedroom thing makes a lot of sense, but the max on the building is where you start. If it, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't match the bedroom.
Well, what if we did two per bedroom plus two, max ten, not including children under 12 years old?
Please, can we just, let us deliberate here? You will have a chance to speak when we're done.
This is the only chance we get to do this.
Right, that's our chance.
I mean, this is, this is when we get to talk.
I.
What if you did two per bedroom and didn't cap? I mean, if a house has 12 bedrooms, what are you going to do, say you can only have 10 people in it? I don't, I don't see the value in putting a cap beyond that constricts ones, constricts somebody beyond the number of bedrooms they have. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Although I do agree with his general principle on the property rates. I think if you don't put a cap on it to some level, then the next, the house next to you is going to be McMansion with, they're going to scrape an old house, and they're going to throw up, and they're going to put a closet and a bathroom in every single room.
And a garage.
And it converts, you know what I'm saying? And that's, that's my concern, and I 100% agree with Jude on that. But unfortunately, what will happen to us? I, my, you know, my perception of what could happen is a developer would come in, throw up a big house, put 10 bedrooms in it, now we, now we're right back to 20-some people being in our neighborhoods, which is why we're here today, after six months. So I think there, there does need to be a number. I'm open, ten may be tight, given the size of houses, without including CT, if an animal were me. So, I mean, Cookie, you've got a different number? I mean, I think the two plus two plus, there are the two-bedroom, two in the middle is fine, because that will, that will reduce the issues that we've had with, you know, the two-bedroom, two-bath being advertised as a 16.
Okay, I'll call it that, so that makes it.
You know what I'm saying? That's the issue. And that's the issue that's come to us a lot, for the small houses that are having 16 people packed in. So there's two-bedroom, two-per-bedroom, two in the common area. But like you say, in a larger home, I mean, you could put, you could put family involved in there.
Doesn't Pinellas County have a recommended cap of 10? Did I not read that somewhere?
I don't know what you read, where you may have read that. Regardless of what the recommendation is, we still enjoy, on some level, talking about ours, and we have the ability here tonight to decide what makes sense for this committee.
Okay, I'm just thinking. I'll go with Joe, so that we give it, we can go along with it.
So, so, Joe, I'm not totally clear, you're saying, because I'm, you're saying in the, in the, let's say in the zoning districts east of Gulf Boulevard, it would be a two-per-bedroom cap 10, and then what is the CT district principally would be two-per-bedroom cap 16, is that what I heard?
No.
Okay, I just, and that's why I'm clarifying. Please, I just, I want to make sure I'm clear. So what is, what is, can you repeat it for me, just so I have it written down?
Do you want to carve out the CT or no?
Well, what episode, what episode are we sitting on?
And I know I asked Greg to, this is way too late. I asked for how many houses had five bedrooms in them, and didn't have oxygen.
While you deliberate, I'll add, just so, one of the challenges with that is, until the last really five to eight years, most communities didn't track the number of bedrooms in a house. You might have regulated it through floor area ratios or otherwise, but you didn't really track the number of bedrooms. It wasn't a data point that was significant in your residential districts until this industry emerged in this way. So if you, if you find that as an information deficit in your community, please understand that's one, you're not alone in that regard. So with that, is there any consensus direction?
Can you tell me what the, historically, what's been the way of dealing with this on the west side of Gulf? I mean, have there been any restrictions on occupancy on the west side of Gulf?
No.
And so what we're proposing now is perhaps putting restrictions in occupancy on the west side of Gulf.
Correct.
So while the issue is what's happening on the east side of Gulf, we may actually also be doing something to the west.
You will be in the current construct and the way that you're proceeding, unless you, unless you say there is no occupancy restriction in that zoning district, you could do that. Ultimately, it's for you folks.
I mean, for all of the people that are falling back on, on the zoning and whatnot, you know, we have, we have an opportunity to keep things separate. I don't know that we want to put a damper on development on the west side, not, not development in terms of building, but in terms of its usage, its usage form. Right now, it doesn't seem to be problematic. And so I don't know what value there is to laying on another level of stuff for them to worry about over there.
There are some, there are some homes that believe it is a problem on the west side.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, it's just simply, do we want to, if we're addressing the east side of Gulf problems, do we want to wrap the west into it, just because it's there?
Didn't you already say at the beginning of the meeting, CT is not allowed?
You're not allowed to speak at this time, and I'm sorry.
I know, it's just a question for clarification for everybody. Wasn't CT at the beginning stated that it would be decided later and left as is, based on the note taken?
No, we're doing everything together.
So I apologize for derailing, I just wanted to revisit that. It's just, as we get into more and more of the discussion of the specifics.
Speaking about, if maybe, like the one that had the 16, would be, would it be appropriate to make a specific recommendation that in the CT district, that it could be higher but not that high?
As a lawyer, I'm always leery of words like appropriate, and I would say you have the ability to make that distinction based on the inherent characters of each of those districts. If you wish to have one restriction in a set of districts, and another, in another district, based on the decisions of those districts, you can do so. So if you want, if you want it to be 10 here and 12 there, or 10 here and 14 there, or six and one, or whatever you're talking about, you are, you are free, you have the ability to regulate in that way.
And I'm not going to throw any more wrenches here, but just for clarification, because I think somewhere else in here, maybe coming, that it distinguishes if there's multiple dwellings on the property, that the whole property has to comply? Like if it's a duplex, that the maximum, I don't know if I read it in ours, or somebody else's, the cap, if it's, say it's a duplex, right? Or one of our historic cottages that has maybe three per or four per unit, right? Four separate dwellings. Would that maximum apply to property, all buildings?
So, so when you, when you said you weren't throwing wrenches, you've just found different tools. The, the, the way this can be treated is, the way I've seen that treated, pardon me, the way I've seen that treated in other communities is to go by the dwelling unit, which I believe is the term we have towards the beginning of this, and regulating towards the dwelling unit. A single-family home is a single-dwelling unit. When you have a duplex, unit A, unit B, those are distinct dwelling units, and each unit would be limited to the bedrooms within that unit, is, is the way I've seen that done. Ultimately, you folks can decide that, and we can, if there's language here, again, that language can be revised. My suggestion to you, before you start parsing that, is figuring out a, a single-family home first, and then we can, we can make that distinction, because until, the nuances don't make sense without the foundation. I'm just.
I think, is there an agreement that in the residential community, it's two per bedrooms, and then two if there's.
Common area.
Common area. So we agree on that with a cap of 10 in the residential community? Do we agree on that?
Yes.
I can go with that.
Okay.
So, so then your RM1s and RM2s, you'd be looking at two per bedroom times two, max 10?
Yes.
Okay? Is that, and as to the, and will be treated as the CT, and understanding there are districts other than those, and I can talk to manager about how we, if you, how they're best characterized and which category they fall, but in the CT, if it's, is there a different arrangement you'd like to discuss?
You know, I think we ought to, when we put this out to the public, they're going to tell us, I mean, they're just loosely making decisions at this point.
I don't, we have been working on this for months, and we have all been over, I call it loosely.
Well, I mean, we're not voting tonight.
No, we're not.
Yeah.
I would like to explore the idea of separating CT a little. CT, I think, is slightly different from the residential neighborhoods, and I think that it has some value to it, at least consider.
So do you want a different max, no max, just go with the bedroom calculus, the two times two plus two?
Would you guys agree at 12 as a max? So if somebody had, on the Gulf, had a three-bedroom, two-bath, they would be at three, two, four, six, eight. If they had four bedrooms, they would be at 10. And if they had five bedrooms, they would be at, the max would be 12. Would you agree to that?
On the CT, maybe I might go two-per-bedroom without a max, because if you've got 24 bedrooms... Oh, you think that, you think that's, that's, I'm done.
Do you agree with that on the CT?
So, folks, if we can avoid, if we can avoid sidebars, the discourse, Member McColl was saying, his concern about having an inflated number of bedrooms is the possibility of losing the cottages in some of the smaller properties to redevelopment. There was some discourse on the site here about seeing if we could get to a different number for the, for that district. So again, if, just going one speaker at a time, where, where do we stand as to the CT district?
I think there's three of those.
I think we do.
Excuse me?
I think you're the max.
12.
12.
So consensus direction is that the CT district being limited to 12? Again, this is for the preliminary draft that would come forward, it's still on subsequent hearings. One of the other elements, was there any, just so I'm clear that we've addressed it, was there a desire for a minimum, as you see in one of the homes beach model of the minimum, where it's, they have two per bedroom plus two, or six, whichever is greater, I just want to make sure that was addressed and not overlooked. I'm not advocating for it, I just want to make clear that what your policy decision was on it.
Is there any value to that?
I don't know, I'm not a policy maker.
All right, Joe.
I got a bit. Okay. That's fine, absent any, any specific direction, that's fine. The, the next element of this is, and you see this from two others, is phasing in that use. I don't need you to tell me how you want it phased in, you know, this date certain or anything, it's just, do you wish to say, given that this is a change in these districts and the uses of property, phasing in that restriction? So there's some, the, the reason, and you can see that in some of the language there, is giving people the benefit of the investment made, same time to phase out and address the use at that higher, at that slightly higher intensity for another, for some period of time. So if you're saying, you know, for a year, it would be two higher than whatever we just said, and then in year two, that'll kick in and going forward, it'll be that. That's just something that you see in some, you see in some other communities that have made this.
I think it's only fair.
Yep. 100%. Okay, so to the extent you want to phase in that use out, you've got 10, 10 is one limit, and, and 12 is the other, do you want to do two more occupants, one more occupants, what are you looking for for that?
No, we're good.
Well, that's not consistent, because consensus direction is to phase in the use with some kind of elevated number, and so the consensus direction seems to be to have an elevated number. I just want to make sure that if I add two or four, that I'm, that's consistent with the direction you want to go.
And then end it over a period of time, phase down.
And then, and then at some date certain, it'll be, for year one, you get this, and year two, once this, these restrictions are more permanent, it'll be phased down. It seems like that's the direction, and I would suggest at least two more occupants for that period makes sense.
And this is only for occupancy?
Right.
I mean, the noise, the, all the other.
I mean, yeah, no, 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 it doesn't leave everything, it's just, this is just specific to occupancy restriction.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fair.
And so over one year, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so two more, then ten, twelve.
For the first year.
For the first year, um, to get maximum.
Okay. There is, as exists in our current code, the next provision on bottom of page 12, is having an owner occupied exception, understanding you've received some input on the phrasing of that and how that's defined. You wish to have an owner occupied exception, in the first place. And, and what it says here is there's not a maximum occupancy restriction when the property is owner occupied, if owner is a natural person.
Does anybody want to weigh in on that?
I'm wondering what the ramifications of that would be. So does that mean that, is that only in a rental scenario, though? The owners that are renting, is that maximum occupancy in a rental?
I'm not totally sure I understand your question.
Obviously, I don't either. All right, let's keep going.
I mean, in the context of, in the context of all of this is about vacation rentals, yes, it would only apply where, there's not, this stuff has nothing to do with if you're just a large family, but if you are, let's say, to use your example, you, you bought a house that was constructed a particular way, the kids move off to college, and it's just you and your wife in one bedroom, you say, you know what, this is a lot of house, we wish to make some money on the remaining bedrooms here, and we're going to rent out those other bedrooms on a short-term rental basis, then you would not be, in, in that construct, you would not have an occupancy, if you're onsite occupying the property, if you preserve that provision. And there's an affidavit and other elements as to how you establish an occupancy, and we could talk about the ways that's defined later.
We can strike that if we don't want it.
You can strike anything in here, you can strike the whole darn thing, you guys would also.
I think it's confusing. It is. I think it's confusing, it is very, very.
Yeah, I don't see the separation out.
Yeah. I move to strike.
Do you?
I do.
Oh, you do?
So if you live on property, so we talked just the last six months. All of this has come about, about out-of-town investors, people that aren't here, right? People that, and we've actually heard from many of our people that actually own, live here, live here and own here, and own a rental here. In this particular scenario, instead of it's a duplex, if it's a multi-unit family, or a multi-unit, maybe, something like what you have, where you are renting out the other side, I mean, the managers on staff, are we really getting the problems out of that type of property? That we're going to put the person that actually lives on the property and renting that property, a portion of that property out? We're going to subjug them to all of the, everything? That's the way I'm reading this. You're, you're saying you're going to, you're, we're, we would be looking to exempt if somebody actually lived on the property and rented out a portion of their, is that, am I reading that correctly?
For subsection C, they would be exempt from the occupancy exception, they would be, sorry, they would be exempt from the occupancy restriction in, in the current draft. Some members have said to strike that. The, the language reads, just to be clear, the maximum occupancy restriction, as set forth above, shall not apply when the property is owner occupied by the vacation rental owner if the owner is a natural person. That's the language. So if Joe lives there, and he's occupying and renting, no, no, no occupancy limit, as drafted, you are free to strike it, modify it.
I think.
Can we just say that they follow the same as?
I would be, I would agree with Cookie, I would go along with the two bedroom, two people per bedroom, obviously.
So you're saying no exception in that scenario?
Yeah.
That's at least two members expressing they don't wish to have that exception. Who recalls, expressing he does.
Okay.
So.
In my opinion, once you're maybe regulating a business, right? But now I'm starting to regulate somebody's home, right? I mean, it's their house.
Who chooses to use it as a business.
My rights when it comes down, I mean, you're down to your house, right? I mean, you live there.
I, I'm trying to get a, what, a scenario, what, because I, I own my property now, I'm in a, in the business district. So I live there. Yeah. So I live there, and I have two units. So I don't have a problem with following the rules that everybody else is going to have to. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I just. When it comes to owner occupied properties, a little different solution for me, but that's okay, you, I don't, we don't have to agree, we're all good.
No, no, I know, I'm, I'm thinking there's something they could bring here that I'm missing that I wanted to understand.
Remember, Houseberg, Avon, do you have any input on the matter?
This is a sticky one.
I move to strike it.
Okay, so that's three, that's consensus. Strike the, the owner occupied exception on the bottom of page 12. Moving to page 13.
So, excuse me, just to clarify, so that means owner occupied is not exempt from the same rules for the two plus two?
Correct.
So he also.
Correct. At, at presently in this draft, it can change through the legislative process.
As we.
The next one is, the next section we're on, page 13, minimum safety and operational requirements and limitations. Of course, the landline element gets stricken in, in subpart B. Any, any reference to ADA would be removed in, in D, but is there anything else that you folks wanted to specifically discuss on page 13? That's fine. It's a short-term rental. All right, with no, with no input on page 13, how about on page 14? There were, there were a few flags here, one was no persons other than occupants who rented the property from the owner may remain in or on the property between certain hours, and no use of a pool, spa, jacuzzi during certain hours. Any, any input on any of them, and just flag those two, show you that they're out of there?
Yes, I, I would disagree with the no pool between seven, between 10 and seven.
Use your microphone.
I would, I would not want to restrict pool use in that.
After 10 p.m.?
Yes.
That's part of the problem.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's the comment. I mean, it.
How does everybody else feel about that?
I think they would stay in only because that's where a lot of noise and issues.
That's probably the residential community, that, you know.
We have our sound ordinance and so forth, I don't know if that would cover it.
Yeah, it almost always comes with music, too.
The pool?
The pool after 10 o'clock sure does. That's how I can take out of my pool.
Denise, love it.
How many, how many do we have that are agreed to keep this in? One, two, Joe?
I use my pool, right, I use my jacuzzi after 10.
He really might get out if he's busy at 10. I mean, it's, this isn't, I don't mean to be flippant about it, but.
Is there, is there an hour that we could put on there midnight?
I, I, yeah.
Or you just, no?
I appreciate where June's going, but I, I think you got a, it's, it is a, it is an issue. It's a noise, it's a noise issue.
It is.
And unfortunately, but.
All right, so there is consensus direction to, to preserve those restrictions on page 14, is there anything else on the 14 that anybody wished to address?
You have one question, may I understand, and there's been people, I'm sorry, on Jay?
Yeah.
I mean, are we saying that you can't have a speaker by the pool at any point in time? I don't see any timeframes on this.
Has written, that's what it says.
I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean.
No outside speakers.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with something I've heard, you know, kind of the Mr. Microphone thing that's been gone, that's went on in a couple of properties, but. I mean, are we calling, calling the police for somebody playing, you know, has a little floatable speaker during regular hours? I mean, if it's out of hand, our noise ordinance falls in, I mean, it's at 60 decibels, it's already there, it's already written. I mean, do we really need to tell people that they can't have a speaker?
To be clear, as written, it is a per se prohibition. You can definitely change that and have it regulated by your, your, your sound codes and sound limits. As written, it is, as you described it, you could not have a Bluetooth speaker playing a phone if it's in the backyard or by the pool at the short-term rental, as that is written.
My opinion on that would be that if we're going to do this thing about the pool stuff that we do, that if you're going to restrict speakers, that it be within the same timeframe, it's all similar noisy behavior when people want to sleep. I mean, or just let it go.
So keep, keep the provision, but have it limited to those, those same 10 p.m. to 7 a.m. hours.
As long as it falls within the noise ordinance, right? I mean, your noise ordinance says during the day from, it even says during the day, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, yeah, the maximum sound permissible levels are not only, there are hours where it's quieter, but there are hours, and candidly, I've been litigating this this week, where you could have a daytime noise violation just by virtue of, somebody's, you know, shooting off cannons and blaring the speakers and all kinds of other things, you know, midday, they're recreating a Bucks game in their backyard, and, and that causes enough of a disturbance, that could be a noise violation at two or three in the afternoon. And so that's, that, that can exist, there's different levels at different hours. So what I'm hearing here is that basically amplified sound would have to conform to the quiet hours, but it's permissible, seems to be the consensus direction we're going
with. During the day? Permissible during the day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Permissible, so, so the, okay, so we, we're all, we're all good with at least having it during the day. My next question is, to the extent we're calling it night, and we're calling night 10 p.m. based on the other provisions.
Right.
After 10 p.m., is it prohibited, or is it limited to the provisions in the summer?
I, I'd have to go along with just 10, 10 to 7, it's done. I mean, somebody's, somebody's going to violate it, people are going to talk, somebody's going to try to talk over it, and he's going to get amplified more loud.
Okay.
Yeah. Play the safe, play the safe way.
Okay, understood. That takes us to page 15 to 20. Should be real easy, guys, we're just about there, the next one is parking. So. As, as in the, the instance of the occupancy restrictions, again, especially given that, I, I know in the last few years, a lot of communities in Florida have received a lot of new visitors or new residents and owners. For those of you unaware, parking was a topic of extensive discussion, parking regulation during 2021, and 2020, this community ultimately, it was addressed through a few, a few administrative issues of sign placements in a few areas, no new, new parking ordinances were passed at that time. Here, we're looking at parking as it relates to the short-term rental industry and how that'll be regulated. Understand, currently in your code, any property owner, not just short-term rental property owners, can park on the street, on the grass, you don't have restrictions specific to that, and we talked about that a lot, and ultimately, that was the direction this community desired to go. So with that in mind, how do you wish to address this? You have, and in the interest of being consistent, the same set of communities as, as a sample, and again, you don't have to pick one, you can mix and match, this is sort of an a la carte menu, have your fun as you wish.
And one of, one of the things that I provided to you was a, a section of the land code that defines the required parking for each of the different uses. For example, single-family, two families, two places, two spaces per dwelling unit. I would generally recommend to you that multi-family, the CT district, which we've talked about in late, is, I would leave those like they are because there's different parking requirements, you know, where the issues have been, have been primarily in the single-family and two-family dwelling districts, so if you're going to discuss making changes to parking requirements, I would stick there and not go into CT and multi-family, because those are already, their requirements are already more restrictive, there's really no sense in changing those.
So in my conversation with the city manager, we discussed the Holmes Beach with the one space per bedroom. You wanted to look at that or had any discussion on that?
Well, as Randy had said earlier, and said a number of times, you've got Amorya, Flagler, Holmes Beach, Indian, Hardwood Beach, Barrett, Redmond Beach, Sarasota, so you've got a good mix of different, Barnes Valley requested whatever standards you set, just like we talked about children and the number of people in vacation rentals, just, let's try to make it as clean as we can. The other thing I mentioned, I said this publicly, and someone had alluded to at one point about applying commercial parking standards to residential, so on property, I don't think you want to go there, just using an example of a, if you use the 250 per square feet, if you use that example, you have a 3,000 square foot house, it's 12 spaces, and what that, what that's going to mean, that for people who are concerned about vacation rentals, if you, if you impose that kind of restrictive, large number of required parking spaces, you're literally going to have all the grass, landscape, and the front yard houses, because as we talked about before, for some reason, there's that drainage requirement on single-family and two-family, so therefore, they can, they can rip it all out. So, you know, I think the cities and counties give you examples of reasonable amounts, you have to go with one space per bedroom, for example, get a four-bedroom in the house, most houses in IRB have the ability to accommodate those four cars either in the driveway or if the garage is available. But just remember, unless it's spelled out in the ordinance, they can park, a lot of people park that live here, they can park them where they want to, but I would just be careful about going too extreme with the requirements of parking, because that's what you're going to do is a front yard that looks like a parking lot.
You know, I really prefer this Anne Marie, where it says such number of vehicles shall not exceed the number of parking spaces located at the vacation rental, and then on-street parking shall not be permitted.
I'd say that that's a, a good, a good starting point. The challenge there is, it doesn't actually establish a number. It says the maximum number of vehicles will be allowed to park at vacation rental, the number shall not exceed the number of parking spaces located. So they have to give you a plan that says this is our parking, no on-street parking, so it, it's fine, that's fine, I just want to be clear that it's, as long as they can fit it on their lot, it's fine, with the understanding of what you've just been told that that can mean parking, they're, they're going to have to submit a parking plan.
Isn't that what's happening now?
It, it will be, I, I, the realities on the ground side go a little bit beyond what I'm here for, I just want to make sure you understand, if you write it that way, and they give you a plan for parking, they say, we've looked at your code, nothing prevents you from presently parking on the grass, we're going to, this is how we're going to accommodate our cars.
Sure.
What I was just asking for, for the benefit of the commission, was that the Anne Marie Island example just specifies that you have to, as part of your civil, you have to provide where your parking's going to speed be, but there was no, there's no presumption in Anne Marie or on-street parking. I think you said you took it from the next one, I didn't mention the next one. And from, in enforcement standpoint, and I probably would, you don't like, Mike, Liner, Captain Liner? Yes, it's a, it's a city imposed, it's a city commission adopted an ordinance that says you're required to have a certain number, or your, or your parking is to be on your property. And we get a call that there's cars parked in front of the house, how's the, how's the deputy going to determine who, who's car belongs to whom?
The on-streets, obviously, easy to park in the street, I mean, it's going to get sideways reference, we'd have to get back to the city to figure out what's going on in each individual property.
Yeah, what, I, I think what I'm asking you is that if you have a vacation rental property next to a traditional, single-family home, and we get a call, there's cars parked in the property, we have to determine who those cars belong to, because they could be a, a traditional, the traditional property owner could have, be having a party going on, so is that mean that deputies are going to have to run tags and match tags and pick one to figure out his car belongs to whom?
So if you have two next to each other, you're saying that we would treat the, under the ordinance, short-term rental would be treated differently than the.
Yes, potentially.
Potentially. I'd have to look, it's going to be difficult. I mean, and then it goes into stuff like we can't share information we get in running tags and that, we can't, that's a secondary dissemination, so I can't run a tag and give it to you. So even if we ran stuff to identify stuff, I really can't tell you. Be very difficult, but I'd have to look at it more and talk to you. So, street parking. How do you guys feel about it?
Discuss that, what they decided. Just, just for me, I'm kind of cookie on Holmes Beach, I think as far as, you know, one per bedroom's not, not bad, the other thing I looked at was Flagler, you know, kind of helped the actual amount of people that were going to stay there. Theirs was based on, you know, three folks in the house, if we put a limit of 10, I mean, that's basically three cars. And a house that can get to 10? I mean, I mean, the only ones you really have to deal with is the two bedroom, two baths, right? I mean, they got single car drive, or single drives, and they're going to be, but that's two, that's, two should be there.
Right.
So I think the occupancy kind of controls our parking situation a little bit. Helps, and may not control it, but it helps.
You got to link them together, though, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, but I, I could, I could see, I could get behind the Holmes Beach, you know?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that, I agree. I am concerned about everybody parking up in the grass for several reasons, it looks bad, and if it was on the hard surface, then we have, we. It looks bad. And if it was on the hard surface, then we have the previous issue as far as draining those and side traffic. So of all the stuff that we had to deal with, this parking thing was the thing that haunted me the most. Because I know what we went through with, park on this side, don't park on that side. I know that the fire department, if there's too many people, they have in their SOP, turn it into your insurance company. We got a fire, a heart attack down the street, and we're going through. So the biggest complaints that I've heard are noise and traffic. And so if we're right into that concern right now, but the Home's Beach thing is fine. The one forbidden makes sense.
Is that reasonable? Well, I mean, do we want to put a provision in there about like not, not in a non-paved or, you know, like not on the grass? Don't we want to?
We can, we can, if you set a number, you can add on a paved surface, a permitted paved surface to the extent the city has permitting requirements for driveways and otherwise.
Yeah, that's what I think. It's, I'm okay with the one per bedroom and then on a permitted paved surface.
And what we would need to do is, there's language and existing language that was allowable. We just go back and match.
Okay.
I will tell you as a, as a general housekeeping matter, that this, what you do in this ordinance is going to have secondary effects in the code that will need to be addressed.
Yeah.
Your land development code will need to be addressed. We're likely going to need to revisit your noise code and other things, just to make sure that, one, they're current, and two, they're actually consistent. And so those, please note that this is not the end I'll be on. I'm not saying, and we're going to agree this, those as a way to continuously regulate this industry. It's rather to harmonize your code so it makes sense.
But a couple would have to drive one car?
Not if they're going to a two-bedroom or more facility, because they can come in two cars. But if they're bringing four more couples, then maybe.
But a one-bedroom, for example, you would be restricted to one car?
I'm not a, I can't speak for the man, well, I can't speak for the manager, but outside of the CT district or like a condo unit, which we've, he's already said would be addressed differently, suggested strongly that be addressed differently, given how those areas are permitted. I'm not aware of that as an issue in your community, but I defer to manage. Sorry. Noted. And so I, I think the general consensus was Home's Beach, but adding a paved surface requirement, of an approved, permitted, substrate or whatever, whatever. We can finesse the language.
Yes.
Okay. Look at that. Parking's done. Page 16 of 20. Anything on there that you folks wanted to specifically address? Joe? No, Randy, thanks for asking.
You passed the Joe test.
I have no more marks. So with that, is there, is there anything on page 16 from any, any member of the body that you wish to address? All right, moving right along. Page 17 is additional required local information provided in a vacation rental. So this is where we were talking earlier about items in a lease. This is what would be, in addition to the information required to be posted, in each vacation rental, there shall also be provided the prominent location on the inside of the rental, the following written information. Street address, hospital locations, the number to the PSFRD, PCSO, those sorts of things. Any, and again, I think we've resolved the quiet hours elements. We would just harmonize those. So is there any input there? Good idea?
Denise, anything on you? Because I think you worked on a lot of.
While you review that, I'll know as we, as we approach the next section on life safety requirements. I'm still working with PSFRD to harmonize those based on where their ordinance is going. Make sure that any industry-specific terminology we use, this terminology, they would use and agree that that is the applicable language. There was some, there was some exchange, but in the interest of getting you a draft, I didn't wait until all that language had been, you know, worked out. So on the next one, I would just say, please note that we are still continuing to work with PSFRD and their counsel to make sure that our expectations are aligned, especially since this code contemplates them being part of the inspection process.
I think it looks pretty complete.
Okay.
Chief Davidson, do you want to add anything to what our attorney said as far as the minimum life safety requirements?
No, you can't top anything that Randy says, but we've been, we've been working together for quite some time. And from the fire department's perspective, we're only looking at the life safety portion of a prevention program. And I explained in another meeting how that came about was, all the buildings above a duplex have to be inspected by the fire department. In the past, single-family and duplex, we could not inspect because that's a, that's private residence and we don't have enforcement. However, being that they're vacation rentals and short-term rentals, they now fall under, in the fire prevention code, as lodging. We have a duty to protect our citizens and our visitors, and our number one focus is keeping them all safe. So we have been working on that, and we want to make it as easy as possible for the owners and how they do the registration. So we want to make sure that our processes align administratively with the city. So it works well for the owners of the properties. But, you know, some of the other topics that you speak of are out of my scope, and we're just concerned with the life safety portion. So, you know, we're here to help businesses. We're not here to shut down businesses. We're here to keep our residents safe, and we want to be able to continue to do those things and just make sure everybody comes to Anne-Marie Beach and, you know, goes home safely.
Thank you, Chief Davidson. We're moving on to divisions and exemptions.
Yeah, so the last, the final division there, exemptions. Exemption for pre-existing rental agreements. I'll tell you that this is added as part of legal advice in terms of not interfering. And if somebody makes a contract today for their rental in July, and they had no reason, the operator of the short-term rental and the guest had no reason to know this was going to be applied, you know, on June 1st, creating a period where those contracts and issues are not impacted by that, but providing a way for approving that, not just if they did. They would have to establish that if there is some kind of violation and issue there. And so that's what that provision is for. And it also flags that any, you know, false or fraudulent representations is a violation of law.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to add to this?
No. The last thing is, you kind of touched on this under the occupancy section, but there is a section that says, "The provisions of this article," and the article is the whole thing we've talked about. "Shall not apply to owner occupied vacation rentals or property which is homesteaded under Florida Constitution, Florida law, from force sale under any process of law. Any person desiring to qualify for the exemption hearing shall file an affidavit substantially in the following form, and it gives an affidavit for how you establish your owner occupied, if you wish to, if you as policy makers wish to have them exempted. You did not wish for them to be exempted from occupancy restrictions." So we would already have to change that language to say, with the exception of, "If you do wish to have other exemptions here." Ultimately, this is, by the way, the last, I don't need your input on the clause, the clauses on the last page, because that's just ordinance formatting. On this element, do you have any other input? Anybody?
So it's a full exemption, I hope so.
It's, it's, they would be, a homesteaded property would be exempt from the, everything we've talked about, save perhaps based on how you've regulated the occupancy restriction.
I don't have anything else to add. Joe does.
I have to leave exemptions up.
So this is trying to exempt them from the rest of, the rest of it? Everything we've talked about. The last two and a half, the exemption bars. Because when occupancy was subject to, you guys struck that restriction, struck that exemption. So if I'm going to harmonize that with the guidance my client has given me thus far, you want occupancy applies. So I would have, I would make sure that that's, hey, you'd be exempt from everything except occupancy if there's, but again, that's for you folks to decide at this moment if there's, if you want this exemption at all, and if it should have any other boundaries or limits. So to be clear, that would include the inspections, all that stuff. Given, given you guys' earlier reasoning, then you shouldn't beat them? Sorry, 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 cookie.
Thank you. It's all good. Nice top one.
Like I said, in my opinion, all reiterated. Persons that are owner occupied at your home. Me personally, I do believe that they should be exempt. Again, it's your primary residence. If they rent out another unit on their property or something of that nature, I don't think it's, I really don't know how important this is. Besides multi-use buildings, you know? But you do have to think about it. We talked about the comprehensive plan and all that thing, and multi-use buildings in the business districts.
Lots of stuff in the business.
Right, but we're covering all that now.
Yeah.
Right? So are we going to get mixed-use buildings that we, you know? A lot, if you put this in place, because that's exactly what it'll be over a business, is a short-term rental.
A lot of people have another home. We bought a home, we live here most of the time, and when we're not here, we're renting. Okay, so is that home homesteaded and that's really their home? I'm kind of looking.
That's up to the county. I mean, that's.
Your lot's on a homestead.
Yeah, your lot, one homestead, that's up to the county. And we've already got provisions in here. People falsify that. I know that was raised. But they have issues with that at the county too, if you're taking a homestead exemption and you don't live here. Chief, did I have something to add? I'm sorry, a little bit, you were approaching the mic. Maybe I just reached for a page or something. My opinion is if you got it to your domicile, then you should have this exemption if you convert it.
So, stir this up a bit. What does that do to density as well? But we still want a cap density even at homesteaded property.
There's going to be a cap at the same occupancy. We didn't, we didn't exempt that.
Yeah.
So they're still dealing with that. So you're, in my mind, you're not going to see, I mean, we still have building codes and zoning codes where you're not going to be able to set up, you know, two big buildings on one lot, in my opinion. But, I mean, I don't.
But are they exempt from inspections and everything else? Is that what Randy was saying?
As written, that is how it reads. Yes, sir.
And the purpose of the inspections is for, I hate to be anal, but the safety of the occupants. To be sure they're going into a safe structure.
But that means you're governing my house.
I'm careful when I come into your house, Joe.
That's, that's the slippery slope I'm on, right? If we start talking about this, then I'm going to be in your house, right? That's, that's my concern here. These are owner occupied homes that may have a rental component with them. And now you're walking in somebody's house. But that's just my opinion.
Well, I just want to hear that part.
Point is well taken. Yes.
So I'm going to give some of my input for the fire inspection. So we will be doing the fire inspections. It's just in a draft ordinance at this time. But there are some things that we have outlined as far as what defines a short-term rental, what defines a vacation rental, with the number of days that it's rented out per year. And those will still have to be inspected, even if that's your primary residence. If you live there only six months out of the year, and you rented out more than 30 days in a calendar year, for us, the fire department, that is worthy of a fire inspection. Chief Pickley is my assistant chief who is going to oversee this program. And this is all new for us as well. I mean, other fire departments are looking at what we're doing all around the state. And we've looked at some other departments as well. And, you know, it's going to be a full-time program for us. We're going to have to implement a lot of new things. We're going to have to hire another person to help manage this, you know, with the number of inspections that are going to have to be done, right? So you'll see Chief Pickley here quite often. His first name's Doug, you can call him Doug, right? And he can answer some of the questions. He helped with the draft as far as the definitions. And we want to make sure that all those things fit in with your ordinance as well.
So just so, so we're clear, this is where the fun part comes with interlocal governmental cooperation. In that if PSFRD has an ordinance and has authority in this district, which they do, to, to conduct inspections for the purposes of their jurisdictional concerns, fire and life safety, they will conduct those. But as written here, to the extent there are inspections that go beyond that, they would be exempted from. If, in the way this is written, I want to make sure you guys understand how it would work. Just because they're going in doesn't suddenly mean, well, then all our stuff will kick in. They're not going there to look at anything but our own life safety. That's their goal. So if you keep this exemption, that's how that would work. So I just want to make, again, make it clear so you know how it works. There's no mystery. And we're not, you know, six months post adoption saying, "I didn't realize."
Go ahead, Joe. No, sorry, just, so that brings up a point. So if they're not exempt, so now, since I do have a rental on my property, Chief Davidson's going to come to my house because I have a certificate, right? Even if it's in a, even if it's a different unit, right? Now they're coming in my house. So now you're telling me I need to put evacuation plaques in my bedrooms? I got to put light in this, or that?
That's not what they're talking about in the scope.
I know that's the inspection, but that's what we talked about in here.
Well, no, no, they wouldn't, and again, well, to the extent it reads about battery power and all that, when we got to that section, what I said is our section is going to harmonize with what their ordinance requires unless you folks desire to require more. You're right that that's in the draft now, with the caveat that that language can change. To the extent, I will leave to Doug, was it, and Chief to say what they're looking at as baseline requirements, because they're not talking about sprinkler installments and, you know, hard-wired electronic lighting on the floor everywhere and.
Yeah, so you had spoken, you have a separate structure on your property that's, you use it in a vacation rental?
That's what I see this as, yes.
So if you have a separate structure, we would not be entering your primary residence. We would simply be entering anyone that we would consider according to, this, most of this verbiage came right from the Florida state statutes on the definitions as far as the transient public lodging, the vacation rental or a timeshare rental. And we're grouping them to coincide with your ordinance, that we're going to call them all, for the sake of this, a short-term rental, so whichever one falls under there. So according to them, if, even if you said that you live in your house 300 days a year, and the other two months when you're not here and you rent those out, you will be subject to a fire inspection, and you will be subject to those stipulations that is outlined in our resolution. Because those, we have to ensure the safety of those occupants in those other two months that you are not residing in.
And so, just so you know, but looking at their working draft, and again, theirs is also in draft. Some of the things that are, that are required, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, portable fire extinguishers. When you're looking at electrical, you're looking at our extension cords not running through walls, our only fuse multi-plug adapters used to all electrical outlets and covers. Is there any exposure damage wiring, minimum 12-inch clearance around the water heater, storage being eaten orderly, are there holes found in the occupancy, random holes in the property? Carbon monoxide alarms, those are the sort of things. They also have a list in the working draft of things that are not required but strongly recommended, like a small extinguisher rated for kitchen use, an evacuation plan posted in each bedroom, if not apparent, if not apparent label doors as electrical panel, fire alarm, sprinkler, some pool safety requirements for pool and door alarms. sprinkler, some pool safety requirements for pool and door alarms, fencing, and if there's hydrants or sprinkler systems, if they exist, what is their clearance laws? And so those are some, and that's, those are not required, but strongly recommended. So those are the sort of things that the fire district is looking at, just so it's not said that you had no idea where they were going. And again, that is a working draft that they're continuing, that they're continuing to revisit. So the question remains on this last element, should there be an exemption for owner occupied vacation rentals?
I would say no, only because if you're renting it, whether you're there, you're not there, it's a rental. And if it's going to be a rental, and the guy down the street has a rental, even though he doesn't live there, it's still the safety of the people who are occupying it, whether they're for a day or three days or a week or whatever.
And again, this is for transient rentals, which are defined by a, a, a higher intensity. This isn't for 12-months.
Right, exactly.
So remember McCall says yes, there should be some kind of exemption. Remember Hannah's leaning towards no, anybody else with sway in?
I'll vote no.
My inclination is there, there should be some, some allowances that are over here. But that's a slippery slope, so I don't even know where to start with that.
Mayor? Again, this is to prepare a draft.
Let me say yes.
Okay, so the draft will continue to include, provided, I'm not, I have leaning towards a necessary consensus, Mayor Kennedy, Doug McCall, and Member Bond. Am I mischaracterizing your statement just because there was some equivocation there? I'm not sure where, I don't want to mischaracterize your policy.
Mischaracterize?
You are in favor of having an exemption for owner occupied vacation rentals.
Some allowance, yes.
In the current draft, between now and the first reading, if you have some epiphanies as to what those some may be, please let me know and we can make you see if the majority of your, of your colleagues agree. So with that, that takes us through the entire draft of the document you were provided. It's not often that I congratulate policymakers, but I want to congratulate you on having a civilized discussion about an issue of great importance to your residents, your constituents, your community. In that regard, Mayor, at this point, the original construct of the meeting contemplated public comment, and subjects any time please, and restrictions you guys made in the pod. So with that in mind, I would turn it back to the presiding office.
Thank you, we will go into public comment at this moment. And I'd like to, we have people on Zoom here too, so what I thought I would start, is it Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, what he's going to do, because we have Zoom, is he's going to first go to, if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak at this time. While we're, while we're waiting for you, Don, if you would like to come up, while he's getting that addressed, we'll start with you tonight, thank you for coming.
Please state your name and address for the record as you come up tonight.
Dine House 21 and 4 East, South, Proudness Avenue, NOS side. I do live on the beach in the CT zone. I think you need to carve that out. I think that's, you're getting very open channel worms. When I first moved here, 35, 40, a long time ago, 100 steps, within 100 steps of my front door, there were four motels and 30 other units that, out of the entire, within the 100 paces of my house, there were only two permanent residences. We lived with a lot of short-term rentals, the motels, and we never had any problems with our short-term rentals. I think there were two reasons for that. The first was that most of the, most of the condos were rented, or apartments, they were rented to our northern visitors, the snowbirds, and those old people, they don't do much anyway. So, so, so they weren't much problem. And then the motels, three of which have been torn down, they had on-site management. Every day there was somebody there. And I think that what y'all are doing to try and curtail the activity is, is very challenging. And I commend you all for the work that you're trying to do. But as you're doing it also, I want you to realize that 100 paces from my front door also are two parking lots that the city has, and there are no restrictions on that. Nobody has to show a photo ID to go there, anytime, day or night. There's also a public beach out there, if people can do anything. And if y'all have the rules, if half the rules y'all got for these short-term rentals on the east side, you apply to that, that parking lot in the beach, we'll be a lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Are you ready, or can I go forward?
I'm ready. The first speaker will be Mary Kay Carroll.
Hi, Mary. Would you like to speak at this time? You have three minutes.
Thank, thank you so much. We are, feel very blessed to own a place down at Indian Rock Beach and our Floridians as well. And I guess my, my feedback is I work and have worked at major universities for over 30 years, and it feels like we're looking at regulations and handle enforcement. So really thinking about, to me, there's three main points of the communication that happens to the renters, that happens to the short-term owners. So we, the first time we've gotten newsletters is in these last three months, in three years of renting, not ever received stuff from the city, so I had to look for it. So that to me is a huge part, to make sure that that's going on, as well as communication to all of Indian Rock Beach residents regarding this, because we had issues from people who actually are full-time residents, actually not from the renters and that. The second key point to me is the relationships. So right, I work at a campus that has 50,000 plus students and 100,000 plus folks in town, so a lot of time got issues. So making sure that folks know their neighbors, their relationship with city and code enforcement, as well as any vacation rentals. And then the last one is really just the enforcement accountability. So I looked while we were talking, so for, again, 60,000 students, our code of conduct is 55 pages or less. We're talking about a 20-page document for, you know, 4,000 residents as well. So just thinking about the scope of sort of overregulation versus enforcement with that. So really thinking about, appreciate very much the enforcement part of what you're looking at, but think this is the goal before some of these restrictions that have to be equally applied are considered there as well. So I know there's a lot of impact, and we want IRV to do well and businesses to do that, which takes, right, folks coming into the community. But as you review it, think through the difference between how much you want to regulate and how much you already have in enforcement, between noise, trash, parking, that will get a 95, 97% of the problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Kay. With this, I'm going to let Rod Baker come forward, and what we're going to divide is we'll alternate, okay, between us, okay? Hi, Rod.
Hey, Rod Baker, I live in Beja Vista, 364. One quick point and then a question for the city. The first point is, I think we might be challenged, I've been in real estate for about 30 years. Pinellas County is notorious for not knowing how many bedrooms any of the properties have. Other cities in our county have found square footage to be a better metric for limiting occupancy of short-term rentals. It's not going to, a number of bedrooms, if they don't know it, you're not going to catch your garage conversions, but with square footage, you would catch your garage conversions. There's a big difference between a 3,400 square foot 3-2 and a 1,200 square foot 3-2, and how many people they can tolerate without damaging the neighborhood. So consider square footage. Okay, and then the question for the city is, can we all declare victory now? Can the side that is on the, the locals, the homeowner's side say that, right, the city has listened to us, we have got warrants, there's a promise of having a downward trend on problem houses and problem owners, can we let the city do their job and take down the signs?
Yes.
Now, on the, on the out-of-town investor's side, they can declare victory too. You've got some common sense ordinances that are not a burden on their business, that are not overreaching, some cities have done a lot worse, so they have had a victory as well. Now, there are extremists on both sides. There's some on the owner's side that will say, until the last vacation rental is gone, I'm going to leave my sign up, and the rest of us are going to live with them in perpetuity. I got to tell you, no one's had it worse than our family has with a bad owner. But coming home every day, driving around town and seeing this reminder of the victory all of the divided city is almost worse than the problem. The reaction of our city is almost as bad as all of itself. Can we all on both sides declare victory and say now is the time to take down the signs and restore the vibe of Indian Rock Beach?
Thank you. Hi. I'm going to go to, so first, but I'm sorry. That's okay. Hey, Brian, who's, who's next?
And as each speaker goes, whether remotely or present, please state your address for the record.
Mayor, next speaker is Jason, I'm going to.
Arnold, I'm at 108 11th Avenue.
Hi, Jason.
First of all, I'd like to reiterate what's been said a couple of times already, that I certainly do appreciate the challenges that our city employees are facing and appreciate the efforts that are putting into this. It's, it's not a simple solution, it's not always black and white, but I do want to acknowledge that, I think that's important. The last key speaker, I 100% support as well. Let's bring back that energy, that positivity. You live at the beach, we should all enjoy it, and we should support each other and, and do things the right way together. Enforcement, for me, is a big issue here. It's what we're missing and what we're lacking. I think we have regulations in place, but is the procedures and the processes and the people in place to actually force those to make an impact? I think that's a better solution than adding regulation after regulation. A few questions that I would like to pose, that I think are, that are brought up through these regulations now are, for me personally, we're, we're an owner of our property, we do short-term rentals as well, we're there as often as we can several months throughout the year. For the last 14 years, we spent Thanksgiving there with our family. With these new regulations, we're not going to be able to host our entire family at our house, they're not going to be able to park at our property any longer. This is not fair. These are things that meet the owners' family for a long time, and I'm sure we're not the only ones that are going to be impacted by these regulations. In addition, with these new regulations, my renters will not be allowed to park out in front of my house. However, anybody from Largo or outside areas that want to come in for the day will take that parking spot in front of my house, it happens now. So these are some of the things that we've got to really think about. What are those impacts that are going to take, that are going to impact the owners that are there, current residents, our neighbors that are there? All of these things have to be taken into consideration, and let's not forget the current residents. Our current residents are not perfect either. We have plenty of current, current full-time residents that live near us that cause just as much noise as other short-term rentals. So some of these regulations should be considered across the board and not just for short-term rentals. Thank you again, we appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, please don't clap, let's move along. Hi.
Hi, my name is Patty Katz and I live in 124.
Bring it down, thank you.
124 13th Avenue, Indian Rock Beach. Just a couple of things. One thing, I think business should be different. The businesses should be different versus homeowners. It is a business. And we are a residential neighborhood where we should be able to enjoy certain things, and businesses should have restrictions, that's all businesses do. I'd also like to bring up that, just in case this is revisited at any time, the port room children shouldn't count as an occupant. I don't agree with, because if you have six children in a home and you have the adults, let's say it's two bedroom, you have two adults in one bedroom, two adults in another, and then six children, the amount of noise that's going to come from that house, if they're not included in that, in that occupancy, is going to be outrageous. The other thing is that if there is a large families, I agree large families should be able to get together, but I know that when we go different places, we follow the rules. And if we have to get two rentals, just like if you have to get two hotel rooms, then that's what you should do, instead of just saying, but then your family can't be together, and, no, then get another rental. That's what we do, that's what we've always done. And again, just, it was brought to my attention by a lovely lady that there are advertisements right now for a, a six-bedroom, or they're saying a 12-bedroom, and there are 38 people. And there's a four-bedroom and 16-person occupancy on their advertisement. So things are still going to be done. I'm not exactly sure that there should be a full year to enforce these things, considering we have been going through this for a long time. Again, we're a residential neighborhood and people parade up and down our streets that we don't know, and it doesn't feel safe. So that's, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, Brian, is there anybody else?
Yes, we have a couple more. Mayor, our next speaker is Darrell.
Hi, Darrell.
Darrell, you may still be on mute. And as you come off mute, please state your name and address.
Uh, no response, let's move on.
Okay, do you have someone else?
You didn't unmute me, so I couldn't speak.
Okay, you're, we can hear you now, sir.
I, I tried to unmute myself. Listen, this whole process should be focused on the real issue of noise. These monumental regulations you're trying to put on rental owners are going to cause bureaucratic nightmares, enforcement nightmares, and certainly don't need to apply like most other communities on the beach that exempted the, the commercial tourist section. The real problem is noise and disturbance to the nice people who live in the residential sections. And this process should have started with focusing on that, rather than a 20 pages of every regulation that anyone could ever have dreamed up, including, there's probably not enough space in our, in our condo unit to post all the notices that you want posted. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Darrell. Hi.
Hey, Joyce Swanky, 323 La Hacienda. Visited in 2011, stayed in Airbnb's. 2016, bought the house, recently homesteaded for reasons you guys know, it's a vacation place. My tax file, it's, it's just about taxes. Please don't waste them on lawsuits. I've attended all the meetings, I feel uncomfortable being up here. It's hostile environment, there's bad behavior, there's people interrupting each other. The barricades at the front entrance at that meeting, that was unacceptable, please don't ever allow that to happen again. And, or demand our names and our emails, it's just not fair to the rest of us. And I pay a lot of money in taxes, I want it spread out, I've paid for the fire department, I think it's great, but my tax dollars are going now to the regulations that they have to implement. Keep that in mind, even though you said no tax dollars would be used for the short-term renters. Use our tax dollars productively. I love the little white car, I can park at the beach now. I also love the signs, the crabby, they're sweet, they're not offensive. Get rid of all those signs, it's politically motivated, they're trashy, they're disgusting, it sends a bad image with this town. Get rid of all those signs, please. As far as when all the smoke clears, keep in mind that you are intelligent people, do what's right for the entire town, select ordinances that are unbiased, they're reasonable, feasible, and they can be economically enforced. Please don't open this town to lawsuits. If someone has a complaint about an Airbnb, let them file their civil suits, which is in their right. But keep in mind, this is Indian Rock Beach, and do what's right for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, do you have anybody else on Zoom at this time?
Thank you, Brian. Come up. And your name is?
My name is Tracy Capress, 1204 Bay Shore Boulevard. I just have one question about what was, what was not going over tonight, about the 24-hour, you know, every single day having a person in charge. I completely understand that. However, the one hour, I think is going to be tough sometimes. I have elderly parents, I'm on the plane for two and a half hours several times a month, and I know you don't want to have a phone chain, but I think to at least have one other phone number allowed.
I don't have that.
Okay, for that, I wasn't sure. Okay, for that, I wasn't sure if that was, um, agreed upon or not. Um, and I just want to say, um, my property is a, is a rental property, and I just encourage other, uh, rental people to just go up and see their neighbors. Hopefully they're not, they're not hostile. I get along great with my neighbors. I give them my phone number. I tell them to contact me, um, anytime, you know, there's a problem that I can hopefully resolve before it has to go anywhere else. And I have several rentals all over the country, and, um, I just, you know, just try to tell people have common sense, and, um, if somebody comes to you and they are a renter, please don't slam the door in their face. Try to have conversations and, um, just, you know, try to get along and make it better for everyone, because we want people who live here to enjoy their time as much as our owners. That's it.
Thank you, Tracy. Hi, Bill. Billy.
Abby, AB 107 20th Avenue. Um, thank you guys.
That's bad.
That's fine. Thank you guys very much for all the hard work you put into this. I think there's, uh, a lot of effort that's wanted, just to try to make it a balanced order, just where people can still have vacation rentals, but there also has to be some, some, some provisions in there that, that, that prevent the kind of problems that can happen. Um, there is one thing I think you may have overlooked, and I'll just bring it up. We still have a lot of cottages. They aren't bedrooms. There's no provisions, if, uh, the definition of a bedroom is a room in the closet. So some of the old cottages, some of the old motels, you know, they, they don't have bedrooms, there are deficiencies. So that might be something you need to take a look at maybe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, George McGordy. Uh, we own it, uh, 42 Gulf Boulevard, so we're on the west side of Gulf. Um, we own the property, it's a three-year property. We've owned it for about four years. We have seven vacation rentals total, so more than I, who'd go over here from Tampa two years ago to be closer. Want to comment a little bit on economic impacts. When we bought the property, the property taxes on the building that we bought, the three-year building, were about $3,000 a year, long-term rentals. So that's all the county was, was getting, uh, $3,000. We built this up to a successful Airbnb. Um, we're not over 90% occupied, um, so combined with the tourist tax, in effect, the property taxes have increased pretty dramatically. We, uh, we pay about $40,000 in taxes between tourist tax and property tax. So that's more of a, one of the tenfold increase, um, what goes to Pinellas County in Indian Rocks Beach, is about 25,000, are that 40,000. Um, when we moved there, um, there's 17 units total in the complex. We were the first Airbnb since then, and now 14 of the 17 are Airbnb, so you can kind of do the math on the multiplier. Point I want to make is, you know, we have a place in the community as well. We think it's very important to, uh, respect the rights of the long-term residents, but what I would ask is, if you think about any of these regulations, you know, the northern big government philosophy is punish the 95% that obey rather than dealing with the 5% that don't. And there's a small number of out-of-town resident, out-of-town owners that use pretty unscrupulous vacation, uh, property management companies that are just chasing the dollars, and they don't do anything about the nuisances. And I'd say act on them with inordinate amount of punishment, you know, a warning, a fine, a much higher fine, and then pull their license. If you start acting on some of these vacation rental property management companies, they're going to say, hey, I'm going to be put out of business if I don't comply. So I'm going to send people out. Um, in our, in our units, uh, we don't allow any renters under 25, the renter has to be present, they have to already have reviews on the vacation rental sites, or we won't, we won't do a first booking on Airbnb or VRBO. Um, you can't make noise after nine o'clock at night during the week, after 10 o'clock in the weekends. Uh, we've asked a number of guests to leave because of that. Um, we've had to have the sheriff's department down three times, and I would say you guys do a phenomenal job of diffusing very tough situations of kudos to you, because usually people are angry. But the point is, most of us are policing what we do. Why? Because we want high reviews, we want high quality for the other guests, we don't want to allow nuisances to destroy the rest of our business. So I suggest you focus your efforts on going after that small minority that whether they're, you know, and by the way, we're, I'm not opposed, and a lot of the owners on the west side, I'm not opposed to the requirements applying to us as well, because we want quality of life or quality of state for our guests. Just because they're not permanent residents doesn't mean they don't deserve a peaceful state here.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. I did want to say one other thing, or is my time up?
Your time is up.
I want to ask that the vacation rental owners that are in the commercial districts that are suing businesses over there when they got there because they're just doing their course of business, and I'm talking about the CrossFit, they should be ashamed of themselves. They're going to put a, a lady whose husband is terminally ill out of business when she's got over a million dollars in medical bills. And I think you ought to think about part of this being, if somebody comes into a commercial district with, uh, an Airbnb, they need to allow the businesses that are already there to conduct business. As long as they're doing it legally, they're doing well.
Thank you, Brian. Next, come on up.
I believe you got someone on Zoom. Is there anybody else? Yeah, I think there's someone on Zoom.
Oh, there is someone on Zoom? Okay.
So the next Zoom speaker is Rajesh.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Rajesh Mittal. I recently purchased a property, uh, in Indian Rocks Beach, and, uh, I think, uh, listening to the call tree, the only thing I, I want to call out is that, you know, we are also property owners in Indian Rocks Beach. Our interests need to be looked at. I heard a lot of our commissioners, our representatives, did not represent us. They, they are there to represent people who voted for them, which is, I think, the right thing to do, but we still pay taxes, and we pay taxes way more than the residents. You know, like the, the jacuzzi pool conversation. If you are going to put restrictions, uh, for 10pm, uh, for the noise, for the, uh, you know, pools, for, uh, the short-term rentals, then that should be, uh, equally done for the residents as well, because they can be equally obnoxious, and I'm not saying everybody, 1% or even .05% could be equally obnoxious, uh, you know, with those things. So those restrictions need to apply equally. And otherwise, you IRB, you are opening up yourself for lawsuits, and you're going to put our tax dollars, uh, into literally, uh, you know, uh, into these lawsuits instead of improving the quality of, uh, you know, facilities which we all get to enjoy in IRB. That's, that's all I would want to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and, and, and listening today on Zoom. Your turn.
All right. My name is Michael Verdi. I live at 407 Maxwell Place between the Harbor Drives. Um, most of what I wanted to say has been said, and then, um, just wanted to get this out for my daughter, who was six, uh, five years old, my two-year-old daughter. Um, the reason, the reason we're able to spend our everyday with them, homeschool them, and spend valuable time, and teach them lessons, is because we own vacation rentals. Um, if you were to take that right away from me, it would completely change the dynamic of my family, and also prevent the ability for my kids to see their family as my grandparents, cousins, aunts, uncles, father and mother have all stayed at a rental in just the last 12 months. As everybody has stated, 95% who really, what I believe is 100% of these clients that are all in the big party houses. I think with the occupancy limits already set, I think that will, uh, clearly take care of all that, and there's just, I think, to save on the cost of doing it, I think maybe we could exempt one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms from some of the other things and make these more geared to the bigger houses. Um, last but not least, um, my daughter has asked, does everybody in our neighborhood hate us because we have Airbnbs? Both of them. They walk past the signs every day. Your signs are flipping off our guests, telling them that they are not welcome in our neighborhoods. Our guests are our family. Our guests are no one but people who try to, uh, work hard and earn their vacation that they get once a week, once a year for one week, if they're lucky. So I don't know why we have put signs up that want to make those people feel uncomfortable. They did nothing wrong. 99.9% of them are just trying to enjoy our beautiful beach. We should be privileged if they want to spend their time on those beaches. So let's do what my people have said. Let's get rid of the signs, let's make my kids feel comfortable to live in this neighborhood again, and our guests as well, including our cousins, aunts, and fathers and grandparents. Thank you.
Next, thank you.
Hi. Alicia Harris.
Hi, Alicia.
Uh, 2011, 20th Avenue, Indian Rocks Beach. I wanted to thank you so much. You guys did a great job.
We're too. I hear you.
Can you hear the mic?
Okay, she understands.
You can tell it's I. I don't know how many people hate me. Uh, we started coming down here with, when my in-laws lived on Starkey, and my parents live in Clearwater, and we are, as I mentioned, I have eight children, so we are not the typical family. Um, so obviously, when we come down here, we can't live, we can't stay with my parents or my in-laws, so we started Airbnb, we have to stay in Airbnb. We usually travel together as a whole family, and a hotel room is just not big enough, two, three, four hotel rooms, so we started Airbnbs, and we've done this for many families. My only concern today is, one, we love our Airbnbs also, and we stay there, um, and we would like to enjoy our pools as a residence, like as a resident does. We want to go in the pool, we want to do things, and I feel like now that we stay in our homes, we're going to, oh, we can't go in the pool past 10 o'clock. And I just, my, with all the regulation, not every family, not every child, not every parent, not every adult, not every square peg fits in around home. There are families out there that come down here with special needs, that you may hear screaming. I'm just worried that with reg, too many regulations, you're going to get neighbors starting to police neighbors and call cops. I have a special needs child. We can't go in hotel rooms. We have to go in Airbnbs, and if someone's making loud noise outside, you know, and our neighbor has called the cops, we've had our family at our home, and our neighbors have called the cops on us once. At 10 o'clock, the cop was knocking at my door, and we were out enjoying the pool because that's what he loves to do. So I just want you to know, with more regulation, you are trying to fit everybody into this one hole, and not while families are the same.
Thank you, Alicia. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, our next, the Zoom speaker is Todd.
Hi.
Uh, 323 Harbor Drive is my property. I'm in Colorado most of the time. Three quick things. On the parking, you said paved, what if it's, what if you've got a gravel side driveway? Uh, does it include boats? What if, I, I see people parking their boats in their yards all the time. Is this just residents, or is it just guests? I, I think it's a little fuzzy there. Um, on the violations, are all violations equal? If somebody's throwing a ball or a fart party, or somebody leaves their trash out an extra day, is it the same classification? Or are they going to be different? Just thinking of some of these things as I'm listening to what you guys are rattling off, so just food for thought, that's all I got. In, in general, I agree, I think this meeting was actually very productive and well thought out, so thanks. I'll leave you be.
Thank you. Thanks for listening on Zoom. Adriana.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Adrian Dawson, I'm at 2008 Gulf Boulevard. Um, I help run the Gulf Breeze Inn. I want to make a suggestion that I feel that we should not be grouping the CT, which is Commercial Tour Zone, into residential. Um, we've been a vacation rental for a total of sub-de three years. There's a lot of cottages like that. We just got the preservation award two years ago from the city, and we have been following these life safety rules since in operation, which we get inspected by the health department, we get inspected by the fire department, by fire marshal, and, um, we have to follow a whole set of rules that is, that the east side does not have to follow. So in that regards, these mom-and-pop hotel motels have been here before Airbnb, and are, some are still standing after Airbnb, I'm sure. But anyways, we're the face. We've been, I guess, the OGs of Indian Rocks Beach, and we've been following the, the rules from day one, and I think it should be kept separate because we have to follow, you know, so many more guidelines than just what you're proposing here, and it's hard to group us, the mom-and-pop motel hotel, into a residential, single-family category.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, any more on Zoom?
Mayor, our next Zoom speaker is Chad Miller.
Hi, Chad.
Hello, um, Chad Miller. I own a property on 1809 Gulf Boulevard, I live in Tacon theaters, Birmingham, wasn't able to come to the meeting in person today. I too want to thank the commission for their hard work today. I think it was a very civil discussion, there are certainly points I can agree with, and other points that I, you know, I don't agree with, and I, I, I agree with the statement at the beginning of the meeting that, uh, everybody's going to be a little bit unhappy, but, you know. So, um, the, the one point that I was, that I was thinking about is, uh, is the fee structure. And I think that, um, it probably worked thought, I hope the commission will put into that when they, they create the final draft. I heard a number mentioned about $400 a year per unit. Um, you know, when I look at my, my BBPR annual fee, it's $180 per dwelling. So, for example, I have a four-unit condo building, I pay $180 for that, it's not, times four, right? Um, and that could get quite expensive, um, and if I do the math on it, I think, Brad mentioned that there was 1,900 short-term rentals in, in all districts, I think. Uh, that's $760,000 a year. So it seems a little bit on the high end. I'd like to see that come down to, um, maybe align with what the BBPR does, so that it's a more reasonable fee, and it, it can come to line with the cost that I heard going out there, around, I think, 150 for your, your magistrate, plus another 35,000 for your software and stuff. So that's one point I want to make. Um, and the other point I think I'd like to make, if I got time, is the, uh, single responsibility person. For the last 20 years of my career, I've worked in a, an on-call, uh, capacity, uh, you know, a call of the sun around the world type, uh, support. Um, it's not really feasible to have a single, uh, a single person, uh, be responsible. The way that we set it up in a regular business with, with real technology behind it is, uh, having a call tree that guarantees you get ahold of someone. I manage, uh, call trees for, uh, I don't know, uh, a 12-person team, another 10-person team, and we follow the sun, and everybody can, uh, can get ahold of someone 24/7 within five minutes, and it's guaranteed. I, I think this more thought has to be put in that from a technology perspective, uh, and not from a, a legal perspective with a lawyer making that decision, because there's, there's more to it behind that, is what I'm getting at. But, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. Hi.
Hey there, I'm Laura Rollin, 1206 Gulf Boulevard. Thank you guys all for doing this and for taking into account everything that we're saying here, um, and listening to the community. Um, me and my family are full-time residents of IRB, and we also own a vacation rental, so we're kind of on both sides of this situation. It's, uh, it's interesting to hear, uh, because we actually, we live this every day. Um, but, you know, our family believes in sharing our community with others, and that's what IRB has always been built on. Um, and we never want to negatively affect any other residents or even vacationers, so we are responsible vacation rental owners and feel that that's really important. Um, but what I'm here to ask of you is, what the two people in front of me asked, is for you to please reconsider including the CT zone, um, in this, uh, legislation. Um, I live there, I'm surrounded by short-term rentals, um, and rarely bothered by it. Uh, this sector of the city should definitely be handled separately, um, as there are very little issues with noise complaints, parking, et cetera. Um, and our city manager validated that tonight. And then, as Chad mentioned over Zoom, you know, I come from a financial background, and I'm just not understanding how the numbers are adding up. I got to that 760,000 number two, um, when we have $400 per registration, so that, that takes us to 760,000, and then the cost adding those up at max are 360. So that extra $400,000 that you guys are going to be collecting from short-term rentals, where does that go? That's my question.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Laura.
Is there a kind of?
Yes.
Sorry, um, I noticed some people leaving, and I just wanted to make a statement from the fire department because they're residents that do, um, a couple, uh, quick thing. Uh, and this is an unfunded liability. We were asked to cooperate with the city in, in New York's Beach, and we think it's a great idea. However, I can assure you that for those of you who voted in favor or against us, that that .67 mil was obviously the minimum. This was not taken into account, nor will that those funds be taken away from building our fire stations and providing the services that we have promised to you. So I can assure you that the monies, uh, we are also building a fee structure that will hopefully, uh, align our missions with this, uh, the city of Indian Rocks Beach to make sure that, that all the residents are safe. to make sure that, that all the residents are safe. So I can assure you that, again, that that money that you guys voted in will not be going towards this. We already have plans in place and I spent countless hours working on this. The other thing I wanted to address quickly to Commissioner McCullough is there is, I apologize, I did misspeak. So your single family, as long as you don't meet that threshold of renting more than three times your 30 calendar days in a year, you will be exempt from that. However, once you cross that threshold, then you would be considered transient, public transient logic. The last thing for some of you that do have, and I don't know if Chief Davis can clarify this. So if you have a single family or duplex, as far as the Fire Department is concerned, you will be subjected to an inspection. Again, it's not over the top. However, if you are already, if you own a short-term rental that's already in, let's say, a high-rise or a condo, you will also be subjected, however, it will be a lot less detailed just because you already are inspected annually per our charter. So just to clarify that part.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay. So if you'd like to come up, say your name and your address.
Sure, Matt Kenez, 621 Second Street. Hi, everybody, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think a lot of what I had to say has already been said, but there's definitely some points that I think I want to at least make or emphasize. I mean, I moved down to Florida in March with the intent to actually bring my family to live in Indian Rocks Beach. We decided to move to Palm Harbor instead due to school systems, middle school, high school, things like that. But still view this community as our community. I mean, we still own the property in the town. It's still our house that we come use, use for our family. So I think a lot of the sentiment that the other rental owners have expressed, I think I express as well. Some of that I would say is with the pool and the speakers after 10:00 PM. You're saying, I mean, if I come to my house, I'm not allowed to use my hot tub after 10:00 PM when we have a noise ordinance that will prevent it from being noisy. So it kind of does double duty by having a noise ordinance in there but not letting people utilize their spa or pool after hours. So I think that's one thing that should be kept in mind, that we have the noise ordinance. If somebody's being too noisy, obviously there's the ordinance for that, call the police and get them out there and shut, shut it down. So I think that's just one thing that should be considered in, in that. And then the other thing would just be, a lot of what's being put into place, I think, is really great for the community. But I think there's more widespread issues throughout the community that should be addressed and maybe not missed, but at a future date, one being the parking. I think parking is just a huge issue everywhere. I mean, when we come down to our house, again, people from Largo and all over, it's parking in the streets in front of our house and it's not a short-term rental or anything like that. It's people trying to enjoy the beach day. So I think, I mean, I don't know why paid parking's not a thing right now on the street, but I think that's something that should be widely considered for our community is just to have people pay to park on the street. And I think that would not only curb the Airbnb properties or short-term rental properties, but just curb the outsiders coming into our community utilizing free parking and clogging our streets for every, every other reason that's been brought up in previous meetings. So I think that's one thing that should be really taken into consideration. The other thing would be parking like boats and trailers and things like that on the property in Indian Shores as well. I know there's a regulation over there that says you can't park that at your property for longer than 48 hours. I think that's something else that should be possibly adopted by Indian Rocks to help clean up the parking in front yards, whether it's a resident or Airbnb property or whatever it is. I think it will just help clean up the city. So, and just my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Matt, thank you for coming. Do you have someone?
Yes, Mayor, next is Ernie Bach.
Hi, Ernie.
Good evening. I had to unmute. Sorry, I've got some problems with my video here, but I'd like to say a few things. First, people in Indian Rocks Beach are fortunate that they've got a mayor commissioned that are addressing this issue, which the people in Indian Rocks Beach and Pinellas County's beaches need to understand is not just a Pinellas County issue. This issue is affecting negatively people all over the state of Florida and other states. I have been active with people in New Mexico and Texas who are seeing whole towns go to short-term rentals. Here in Osceola County, I presented a chart when the mayor and I were both up in Tallahassee, especially two years ago, when there were 50 some odd mayors and commissioners for the state of Florida, addressing the Florida Senate about this issue. It's longstanding and it is devastating. It's devastating to the homeowner. We've heard some people say, well, property rights are for people who invest in short-term rental buildings. You've got a street, it's in Indian Rocks Beach, which houses two people that I've taken to Tallahassee with me. Forty some odd houses on that street on the intercoastal side. Four Airbnb's, excuse me. And these people are claiming they had property rights. Well, unfortunately, forty some odd property rights are more important than only three or four property rights, especially when those people bought there and have lived there for 10, 20, 30 years or more. There's so much to be said on this issue. People, this is a prime problem in all parts of the city and the country. And I would love to have more time to discuss this, but I'd like to give time back to the people that are there. Thank you, Indian Rocks Beach Commission and Mayor Cookie. I look forward to addressing the city of Largo at their commission meeting on this issue. And incidentally, I've heard two people address us from the pelpit and saying things about Largo citizens coming to Indian Rocks Beach. Stop picking on Largo, I live there.
Got your message, okay? Everybody knows, all right? Thank you.
Hello, Abby Lopez, 337 12th Avenue. Kind of on both sides of this, I own a small motel in, on Second Street. We were, it's one of the older motels. Grandfather then to be a, to be a hotel motel, one of the first ones in Indian Rocks. It's interesting that, it's important to me as a business owner, my sister's a hotelier, so is my mother, to have a level playing field. So here's an interesting little scenario. Two years ago, I got a notice from the county that the pool that I had had at my motel, that I had at my motel for over 20 years, was unsafe. For the 14, I have max 14 people occupants, I had two choices. I could remove the pool or I could remove two units and go down to 10 occupants. I chose to keep the 14 people, so I kept my six units. I have 14 people max. I had to shut my motel down for six months. I had to remove my pool, put a new pool in at the cost of $125,000. I have to have a lift on my pool. I have a new pool service, which we share the same one as the Hilton. And I get to also witness a lot of other short-term rentals renting to 14, 16, 18 and everyone swimming in a postage stamp. So I feel like that some of this, you know, some of the legislation needs to address, you know, leveling the playing field. The fact that I had to remove a perfectly good pool when there were other people that are doing rental businesses that don't because of a safety issue. I don't know, I have a question with that. So I know, I've addressed it with the county pool people and I have county pool people that will be addressing it at a state level as well per a safety issue. Thank you for everything you're always doing.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for coming.
One, Darushinovsky, 450 Harbor Drive South. I'm surprised that most people who came here, they were owners. They were not residents, just residents. I lived here for many years and for me, the issue of noise is very important. If you live on the finger, the noise carries. If somebody's talking at the pool at 11 o'clock, you hear it like it's next door to you, even though way across the water. And another issue is parking. I don't think Fire Department can come through my street when the people, not only renters, but they come during the day, they come visitors to the renters. And sometimes double, you know, visitors than the renters are. And they stay all day. And they park five or six cars on the street. If you, the streets are very narrow in Indian Rocks Beach, especially on the fingers. If they park on both sides of the street, that is really hard to even drive through if you have a van because there is no place. So this issue is very, very important and I hope you address it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in today. Hi, Jerry.
Jerry Newton, 438 Howard Drive North. I agree with the observation of the previous lady mentioned that the ratio of permanent residents to short-term rental owners is definitely not, not a representation of reality tonight. I don't know whether everybody's being shy or we're just a little bit respectful, very respectful of what's going on here. The meetings were well organized, very productive, more than we could have hoped because of your preparation and your, your format. So I commend you all on that. Couple of things I want to mention, just from cryptic notes that I was able to take during the meeting. I think there was something about no re-inspection fees. So why would I make any attempt to meet the needs of the inspection? Why, if I don't get somehow penalized for making inspectors come back for a second or third inspection, I don't understand what my motivation is to get it right the first time. So you might want to think about that. That seems to me like to be a waste of the inspector's time and our money. Are the inspection fees included in the registration? If so, I hope we've done the math on all that because these guys all require compensation for their time. And if the register, again, back to the same comment, if the registration fee is once a year and it requires three or four inspections or even two to get it right and to meet the requirements, I just don't see that working. So I think, I think more time needs to be spent thinking through that. I didn't hear much about fines for violations. Now, I could have missed it, but unless the violations of the rules have some bite to them and some penalties involved, there's, there's no reason to follow the regulations. So this conversation about eliminating the ADA requirement, I don't think that's our call, is it? Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but the government is involved in ADA across the board and I'm pretty sure that, that you can't exempt yourself from that in a commercial property. One more thing, when a person does, or when we do identify a violation, it needs to be corrected. If this lady had to tear out her swimming pool, someone else might have an illegal bedroom in the garage or other parts of the house. And I'm not sure why we wouldn't say in the code that that had to be corrected before the property could be re-rented. And one more thing on my way out, don't forget RVs. I know we have trailer, boat trailers and stuff that are involved in the parking, but I've also seen RVs pulled in with another four people or six people sleeping in the RV. So you've got to give some thought to that. Thank you.
I didn't use like three, four, three minutes and I just have two points. Oh, okay. Thank you, Greg.
Mayor, our next speaker is Laura Lindsey.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Lindsey. I have 115 12th Avenue and 432 18th Avenue. I bought them both for my family to enjoy and we supplement through short-term renting. I want to mention just a couple of things that were on the agenda tonight. The pool, specifically the hours for the pool, I would say that that would defer to the noise ordinance so that the pool, you know, use of the pool lends itself to noise, which I understand is the presumption behind the rule. But how would that be enforced absent noise? The only way to enforce that absent noise would be intrusion of people's privacy. So I just think that's excessive specifically to the rule. So the pool noise can be enforced under the noise ordinance. There was discussion about an exemption for owner occupied in the context of, you know, who lives there and is renting out rooms. But I would also propose an exemption for owner occupied when the owner is there on vacation. So for example, we go on vacation, we do have the two homes. We started with one, but our family outgrew one, so now we go to two. And we do swim after 10 o'clock. Our noise is not a disturbance, all of our neighbors have our numbers. But we will have extra cars. We do Thanksgiving there as well. We have cars, we have people, we own it. That would be an easy thing to monitor, anybody can find out who owns what. Additionally, as far as the noises go, you know, these things that are considered a nuisance are really a nuisance to everyone. So they really can be applied universally. Street parking is a nuisance. Noise is a nuisance. So those things can be applied universally. I mean, ironically, the complaints that have happened, zero have happened at either, have initiated at either of my homes. However, they have happened at owner occupied homes near me and long-term rental homes near me that are rented to people that do not, there are not enough parking spaces. So there's a car in front of my house every single day and it is not related to anyone that I rent to. So that's what I got.
Thank you, thank you for coming and listening on Zoom.
Thank you.
Good evening, Harvey Johnson, 1206 Beach Trail. And I do live on the west side of Gulf Boulevard and I've already expressed all of the difficulties that we've had with the vacation rental next to us. But I'd just like to say after, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing, but after listening to everything tonight, I think that you all are coming perilously close to rendering toothless provisions in this proposed ordinance pertaining to corralling excessive and unreasonable noise. If you always defer back to the noise ordinance that's in our code, that's something that's invisible to renters, to vacationers. Something needs to be brought forward and specifically put into this vacation rental ordinance that deals with, and I'm reading in this one only section that I can see in here that pertains to advertising where you talk about excessive and unreasonable noise can deprive neighbors of the peaceful enjoyment of their private property. If you fall back and just say, well, someplace buried away, again, in our city code, these renters know nothing about that. They need to know when they get here, they need to have it put in front of them. It needs to be, whether it's on a door, it's in agreement. However it is, that they cannot disturb the neighbors. And we have a real problem when you just talked about taking out the amplified noise section here. We have a vacation rental next to us, five bedrooms, they advertise 12 to 14 people. They have an outdoor amplified music system. And when they discover it, it's game on. And then we are, end up having to deal with, listening to their music often all afternoon into the evening. We can't get away from it. We close our windows, we have great double-pane windows. I can go nowhere in my house often all day long and I can't get away from listening to the neighbors' music. That should, I should not have to deal with that. My wife should not have to deal with that. No resident here should have to deal with vacationers' music. And that is a big part of the nuisance element of these rentals. If they want to play music, that's fine, but I should not, it should be at such a low level and this should be emphasized someplace in this code, in the vacation rental part of it, that I should not be, have to hear it inside my house when my wife. that I should not be, have to hear it inside my house when my windows are closed. It should not go beyond their property and impose on us. And this is not the same as residents who every once in a while are sitting out by their pool and listening to the radio. New renters come in every week, and then all week long, this is what happens. And then perhaps the next week. If we're lucky, there'll be renters who don't discover that outside music system. So this needs to be addressed and taken seriously, and not kind of just fall back on, oh, well, the cities have, city has noise ordinance. No renter is reading the city's noise ordinance. Needs to be someplace put in their, in their place, born right there and available where they can't say, oh, I didn't know anything about it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else?
Yes, our next speaker is Ashley Russell.
Hi, Ashley.
Hi, Ashley Russell. I have 511 and 530 First Street, Unit B. So I, I didn't write down everyone's name, I got Laura Lindsay. I just want to echo what many other vacation rental owners have said. I think there's a stigma that we're outside, out of line owners, but I think what you're hearing is that many of us are invested in the community, we're active in the community, we're using these rentals as places that we take our family. And I know I bring my family at least once a month to our rentals to enjoy the community, and have been for many years. So I would just please, again, urge you to consider that, because Laura had a great idea with when we're using the homes ourselves, I mean, if I'm driving there, we have two bedrooms. I drive, my husband drives his car. Now we're not able to bring, you know, a friend over from Tampa to join us, or if my parents are in town to join us. You know, I think the parking limits are probably one of the most difficult ones to fathom for us as owners who use the properties ourselves. I think, again, I've said this before, please focus on the current ordinances you have in place, the noise ordinance, and all four, the trash ordinances, all four. Please focus on those first and enforce those before you continue to put more regulations on us. And again, just look around the room and think about all the voices you heard tonight. Many of us live close by, we're in the community, we're invested in the community, we use these homes for our family. We're such a small majority, such a small minority, that is outside, out of line, and not watching over their properties like they should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Hi, Erica.
Hey, good evening. First, of course, as many people have already said, thank you all so much, staff, Randy, Greg, all the work that went into compiling this huge document, and all of the thought and consideration that it took to try to weed through all of this and not get too far in the weeds in the process, so thank you all for that. You know, there's not much that can be said that maybe others haven't said. What I was doing is you were going through line by line, I was kind of doing the same, just trying to look at this from your shoes, because you're going to come away from here, and somebody's going to have to now try to create this first draft. So I just want to point out a couple of things that hadn't come up during your deliberations. So I'll try to move quickly, because I know I'm limited. On page two, in the definitions section, please consider that there's a slight gap in the owner occupied definition, because it refers only to family members, blood relatives, other people who are married, doesn't address friends or other guests not paying rent in a home. So it shouldn't just be family. In terms of the enforcement section, page three of 20, I really agree with Commissioner McCall's statements. There has to be some delineation between someone who is, as Jerry Newton said, using an illegal garage as a bedroom, and someone who accidentally put their trash out at 5:00 in the afternoon instead of 7:00. We really have to think about that because of the licensure issue. If I, you know, I have a staff, housekeeping staff, that may put the trash out when they're done cleaning at 5:00 PM. According to this, if I get three violations for that, and I pay the ticket, the paid ticket constitutes a strike. And in three strikes of a trash violation, the license will be taken. Please really consider that. That's, yeah, you got it. Also, under the, on the same page, under the any activity, if someone is suspended, they can't have any rental activity. Well, of course, if someone can't have a short-term rental, then they are going to go to a long-term rental, which is what you want. But that line says that they can't do that either, which then, of course, gets them foreclosed down their mortgage, another problem. So just look at that. The designated responsible party, I'm actually not sure if everyone addressed Cookie's question. Please look back at the minutes, because I think what was being said is you don't want that secondary or tertiary person because you didn't want the foam tree. I think that the, the way it still is reading, if I heard correctly, is that you don't want to allow secondary people to be designated. So please just look back at that, because as many people have said, you know, I, I biologically can't be out 24 hours a day. I, you know, so again, according to this tattletale culture we might be creating, someone could just call my number three times at 2:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the morning, and if I'm not awake to answer it, that's a strike. So some of these things, I do think we need to have a secondary foam tree. Thank you again for all the time you spent, much appreciated.
Thank you. Bye. Oh, you have someone else, okay.
Yes, next up is Dave.
Hi, Dave.
Mayor Kennedy, thank you. I want to take a second to appreciate, thank you guys.
Dave, what's your full name?
Sorry, oh, I totally forgot, yeah. My name's David, 27th and Baltimore. Sorry about that. Nervous of public speaking. I appreciate you taking the time to make this a Zoom call, so glad I was able to participate. I'd like to talk about the occupancy, because it's governed by a lot of different things that are in addition to any local ordinance that gets passed. So the Fair Housing Act is at the federal and the state level. They're almost identical to each other, and they have a lot of guidance on how to determine occupancy. And at the federal level at least, it's governed by the Housing Urban Development. And in 1998, they were directed to adopt Keating Amendment, which provides its policy for enforcement of occupancy. One of the things that is difficult to comply with, with the Fair Housing Act, is discrimination towards large families. And I think there was a woman that talked earlier, where we can't really change the way we market or discourage familiar relationships. So there's a lot of regulations, state, federal level, that apply and kind of govern occupancy. So I think it's really important that we look at those regulations too, to see how that fits in here. The second thing I'd like to talk about is, I lived in DC for a long time, I've been an IRB resident for about two years now. And there's about 750,000 residents, DC is just 1.5 million, I think, here. So I think that to make the parking situation better, is that we have the vaca, we have non-residents, and we have residents. And we can, I think that the city can zone that. And if you enforce it, it's a great way to keep the streets free from non-resident parking, and you also collect revenue from parking. So just kind of wanted to throw that out there, there's a lot of talk about parking enforcement, and it's not really possible to say that, oh, this person from Tampa is here, and they can park on the street legally, but somebody that's maybe from Ohio or something like that is visiting a vacation rental home in camp. Or maybe that person's from Ohio, and they're staying in Tampa, and they drove out here to see the beach. So I think that maybe if we made that an either-or thing, it solved a lot of those parking problems that potentially generate a lot of revenue in the city. So that's what I have, I appreciate you guys giving me the time, so thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi, my name is Alan Paz, and I live at 214 20th Avenue Parkway, Broken Island. And I've been a resident here since 1994, so I guess that makes me a real lifer.
Yes.
And I'm one of your perspective of myself, my family, and some of my neighbors, only one of yours is back there, but, and the things that we discussed. And there's some things that you cannot regulate. And the one thing you cannot regulate is the sense of loss that we have, that we no longer have a neighborhood. Children don't come to our house to trick or treat like they used to. We can't say hello to grandma, whatever, that's 97 years old, that walks to the beach every day. But that is the reality, law is the law, they're 1900, Airbnb's here now. So we're going to meet a lot of new people. Unfortunately, a lot of the people that come to visit us don't treat us the way they would want to be treated in their own neighborhood. They speed, they park their cars in inappropriate places, when they very well don't have to, because they want to get in and out a little easier. The noise issue, I've certainly made enough noise, shooting fireworks and having loud parties. And I think at times, the officers have come to visit either my house or my neighbors. So I'm not innocent of noise. But the issue is 1900, there was only one of me or two of us. Now it's 1900, and it's 24/7. We did it 4th of July and December 31st, now it's every day. And we understand that people want to come in this beautiful place and enjoy it. And I'm not so sure what you can do through regulation, other than hone in on the troublemakers. I mean, does it make sense for someone to bring a 150-pound dollar on pincher and let him loose in the yard with a four-foot fence, and have the dog try to eat my little elderly shibainu that's blind? No, that's not right. And those are the kinds of things to consider. So as you think about all the policies, perhaps you might want to consider globally to raise the policies and the restrictions and the regulations of the Airbnbs as close as you can to what the hotel industry does. You don't bring a 150-pound angry with spikes, you know, dog into a hotel, right? You don't blast six-foot speakers in, you know, the pool at the Hilton. They'll throw you out. And one area that you did not address, at least that I could not see, you talked about advertising parties. I don't see parties advertised. I just see, I go in, rent a house, and then Friday night comes along, and it's 50 people show up. Okay, so the rule is 50, they'll make it 49. That's still too many people. And then they park all over the street, we can't even get out of our house. So I wish you well. Just keep in mind that many of the residents and the things you hear come from a sense of loss. I just got over losing Pueblo Village, you know? So just, just keep all that in mind, and, you know, hone in on bad behavior. And wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Next, we have Marcos.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time. So.
Marcos, can you please state your full name and residence?
Oh, yes, Marcos Cunha, Howard, Manhattan, First Street. I have a list of things that I went through and took some notes today. I think overall, as an owner, and very often we go there with family. We love the community, we truly enjoy IRB and everything that the house offers. The reason we bought it is that we kept renting it and spending a ton of money on our own vacation rentals when we were going out there for family gatherings and reunions. And so we finally decided to also own one, so we can have our own family gatherings in the place. But some of the regulations that were proposed and discussed today are quite, you know, high. So as several people said, $400 a year are quite high, and we've never seen governments reduce fees and budgets, so please take that into account. If anything, if that $400, you know, $200 of it were to pay the trash folks to push carts, you know, back 20 feet or 10 feet on some of these allowances that pay the service, I think that would be amazing. That way, the cart issue would stop plaguing this town and the owner as well. The 30, 60, 90 penalties, the days penalties, I think those, you know, think about the guests. That would put guests in a tremendously awful situation. If all of a sudden, they just say, hey, everybody, for the next month, we have to cancel your reservations, or for the next 60 days, if you cancel your reservations, it would, you know, wreck havoc in so many people's vacations, and that would be truly a shame to do. The parking, consider shelves as an alternative to pavement. A lot of us have shelves, this is very common in the area. And so please consider that as on your counting parking spots. The rooms, two people plus two in the couch, I think that's super fair. But please, you know, consider young kids, whether it's four years old or less, five years old or less, as some of the other towns have. Because, you know, young kids sleep in cribs, and they sleep in packet plays. And so in a typical hotel, a very small studio hotel, you get four people, and that's completely illegal. So to have a one-bedroom where you can only have four people total, sounds way too low. Also consider, you know, the bedrooms that are, the attic closets and windows are in a flood zone, so whether it's converted garages or just underneath the pilings. Also think about, you know, how not only taxes, but IRB property values have completely skyrocketed, tripled in the last probably five years because of the flexible property usage that these BTRs have allowed. And that's my time, so. Just think, one last thing, I live in Austin, and over a quarter, over 75% of BTRs are not registered. They're playing by unfair rules, and they're not paying the taxes and everything else. And that's what, you know, too stringent the regulations end up doing. You get people skirting the laws, and then you have the people trying to pay fair, pay the taxes, you know, because they want to comply and want to be good neighbors. Last thing I'll say, please consider paying for the pro version of Zoom. It only allowed 100 people for a while there, and I was locked out for the first hour, so. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you, Marco.
Good evening, Darlene Rusnalski-Cavanaugh, I'm here on behalf of my mom at 450 Harvard Drive South. I too miss my restaurant in Pueblo Village back in the 90s that I used to own. Anyway, I'll keep it short, because I've spoken in the past, I don't want to repeat everything over and over. Since we've installed cameras recently, I noticed there's a lot of people making U-turns that are not our neighbors in our car. And I've already reported to you guys before that our car has been dented, but I can't prove who did it before the cameras were installed. But anyway, so there's a lot of traffic, people are making U-turns, just a lot of, a lot of traffic. The parking, I heard you guys talk about this tonight, about how you're going to limit, if there's going to be 10 people, how are you going to say there's not going to be 10 cars? 10 people, 10 cars? I don't know how you're going to determine that or control it. Another issue I saw when you guys were talking today, cause and effect. You guys are going to say, well, they can't park so many cars on their property, so now they're going to force it onto the street. So now I'm going to have more cars in front of our property, in front of our house. That's what I kind of heard you guys saying tonight. So it's already an issue as it is. So, and then if you guys say, well, no parking on the grass, well, now I already have, we already have in front of our house, we have photos and videos, tons of cars from the Airbnbs on our street, of people parking in front of our house and across the street. So where do we park? So we're left to park on the grass, because we can't park in front of our house where we block the road. And it's already left to arguments. I just want to make something simple, the argument, I'm sorry, about disabilities. I've attended conferences across the country on disabilities, and they're all held at major hotels. And they're the most accommodating spaces, I'm sorry to say, but I have to say this. And I went to national conferences and state conferences with the governors, and they're all held in major hotels, because they are handicap accessible. So to say, well, one size doesn't fit all, the houses are not as accessible as the hotels, I'm sorry. And also, the last hotel I stayed in, there was a family of 10 kids. I couldn't believe it. It was an extended stay, so there was two rooms and a kitchen. They rented more rooms. People can stay in hotels if they have eight, 10 kids. It's not impossible. All right, and also, when you guys were talking about money tonight, about costs, you guys were talking about what's today. But you guys, I want you to think about what is tomorrow? Because this Airbnb situation just keeps growing and growing and growing. Also, I saw in commercial or the news reports saying that some of the Airbnbs are doing good deeds. Well, a lot of homeowners have also done good deeds. They've taken in people that were having financial difficulties, or were in an earthquake in another state, or tornado, so I just want you to know that homeowners have done good deeds too. And that's all, but I just want to say thank you very much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, next we have Tony. Yes, next we have Tony.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for putting this together. Really appreciate the time and attention to detail. There's been a lot of really great people speaking this evening. Think there's been a lot of wisdom shared. And I just wanted to really focus on something that's been repeated multiple times already. I apologize for repeating, but I think it is worth hearing and helping you to understand that there are a lot of people out in the community who care deeply about this issue in terms of proper regulation and maintaining the health and welfare of the community as a whole. The real problem I think everyone would probably agree on is noise. If we try to over-regulate, if we try to over-reach with, you know, these sort of crazy backdoor approaches, where we start really skirting the issue of property rights, it's opening ourselves up to the potential for massive litigation. And I think y'all are probably aware of that. I don't know what your tolerance is for spending other people's money. I don't claim to have an understanding of that. But this could turn really ugly really fast. By simply focusing on the bright issue, which is noise, we could mitigate 99% of this problem. But you want to start getting into figuring out whether or not someone's got permitted bedrooms or unpermitted bedrooms, and how many people are sleeping in there, or how many people are there today, or who the cars belong to. It's going to turn into a logistical nightmare for the city. Instead of taking the simple approach, which would have just been, you make too much noise in your property, you're going to get in trouble and put real teeth to it. It's such a clean, elegant, and simple approach to just focus on that element. But if you guys have a tough job, I understand it. Those are my thoughts, and I hope you're hearing that. Because God forbid that the very fabric of this community gets ripped to shreds because of vicious lawsuits over the course of the next year or two. I mean, the guy before brought up the 30, 60, 90. You start canceling vacations on people, there's going to be so many people that get involved. There's going to be so much acrimony. And it's because some angry neighbor kept calling the phone number at 2:00 in the morning just to get three strikes. You're going to have a nightmare on your hands. I hope that's being considered, I really do.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Hayden. I live at 116 131st Avenue, Madeira Beach. I currently have four, I'm a Realtor. I currently have four homes under contract in Indian Rocks Beach, and I closed on one last month. I want to share something that happened to me recently, and I need to just make you aware as you look at these ordinances. I was holding an open house, and I've been a Realtor for 18 years. I was named Realtor of the Year by Florida Realtors this year, CRS of the Year. So I do a good job. My point in saying that is, I was holding an open house, and local neighbors came in and basically demonstrated and screamed at the other people in the house. They said, I hope you're not buying this for a short-term rental. We're taking care of that, we're going to bleed them dry, and voiced and were aggressive. I've never experienced it in 18 years. And I love Indian Rocks Beach. It's been a town that people have loved, and the community's been probably one of the most special. I do know who those people are. I do know that in Davis Island, neighbors interfered in people selling properties, and the courts did not look on it favorably. I also had to reach out because, as someone spoke earlier, we hold fair housing very high. I treat all people equally, I invite all people in any home, I do not discriminate. But I have to now sit there and manage who's coming through the door and what is their intent. In the future, I will be videotaping anybody that comes through the door. But I will tell you, my experience is that I had other local neighbors coming through this house, taking video, and it's just such a shame, the vitriol that has occurred. So I applaud you guys for the thoughtful approach to try to find a way to cohabitate or to come together as something that is workable. But I also want you to know, I'm very concerned for a community where somebody can artificially call on noise or any of this other stuff because I'm seeing people's feeling that whatever they do to shut it down is within the bounds. And so I think as a legislative and an enforcement body, you need to be careful about people making fake claims and trying to put somebody out of business. And so again, I think the general tenor I've heard here today is good people want to follow the rules and live within the community. And I also want to thank the mayor who took my phone call to discuss this with me. I know that's not the kind of city that she expects to have. Again, she gave me permission to call law enforcement, but is that really the kind of situation that we have to live in, and the owner saying, well, we can't have open house because we're going to have a demonstration? I mean, again, it is mind-blowing to me, and I have witnesses. So I just share, and I don't know what else in that, but my biggest concern is I'm seeing the link to which people who are passionate on the other side will create events to sell their point, and I worry about that. So again, how you manage that, I think, is going to be really critical, that there's not arbitrary complaints, like the woman said, calling three times at 2:00 in the morning just to gotcha. That's a problem. So thank you for your time, very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hi, I'm Beth McCollum, I'm at 41 Harvard Drive South. And it isn't just a noise issue for me personally, it is an occupancy issue. Because I just found out this evening that the house across the street from us that was supposed to only have 14 people and that they were going to increase that to 20. And then two doors down is another group that has, I believe, 14 or 16. So it's about over 30 people in those two houses at any given time if they're at full occupancy. So to me, occupancy is an issue as well down where I live with the larger houses. I want to bring this up just because, I don't know if this is the right time to do it, or if y'all have any suggestions of how this could be handled. But I don't think I can go another summer standing on my dock, watching all the booming that's going on. It has increased so much because of so many more people visiting our area. And they're renting wave runners, they're bringing boats, and they don't know the rules. They don't know that this is the manatee zone between the months of April and November, or December? No, good, November. And they're plowing back and forth on the west side of the basin, and they're going straight over where the manatees are feeding on the flats. And this summer, I saw manatee, my husband and I watched manatees on those flats every day. At one point, we had a herd of over 30 of them that I put together a beautiful, my husband put the drone up, and we have a beautiful video of these gorgeous animals on that, on those flats. And there has to be some way to get the news out to the people who are renting the properties, that the people that are renting them, who are going to rent the wave runners, have to abide by the rules. I've complained to FWC, to the Sheriff's Department, no one has come out. No one has come out to help me flag these people down and tell them what the rules are. So I just don't want to miss this opportunity of whatever y'all are doing, which thank you so much for doing all this hard work, it's a mess. And I do appreciate all that effort that y'all have come together to do, to try to help the residents and make some of the short-term rental people happy. But I don't want to miss this too. I want to see if there's a way we can get this in there too, and maybe put together something where the owners have to let the people know what the waterway rule's on too. Can y'all do anything about that? I mean, is it out of your jurisdiction?
We don't, I don't, can't go back and forth with you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Anyone else on Zoom?
Hi, Dana McArthur, I live at 41412th Avenue.
Say your name again.
Dana McArthur, I live at 41412th Avenue.
Dana.
Dana, D-A-N-A. Sorry about the accent.
And your address?
41412th Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few points, just to make possibly a suggestion. Is there a way to look at zoning to see, to get ahead of possible short-term rentals today? Can we break it in zones? How many houses are already in Harvard Drive North or South? And is there a maximum cap of those areas? Is there a way to look at that as a possibility? It's just a suggestion. Breaking your residential into three different zones and saying, we already have 75 houses over here, grandfather those, and okay, maybe no more allowed in that region.
We cannot legally do that.
Again, your square footage, occupancy, a lot of these homes are being built to current zone zoning restrictions, but again, they have five or six bedrooms for some of them. They're very large bedrooms, some of them do fit two queen-size beds to occupy what is allowed to be built versus one king-size. And that is, that also something that would be looked at, like someone said, two bedroom, two bath? Occupancy will only fit one bed. Look at the square footage for that occupancy versus like a 10% cap, just another recommendation. I think someone just spoke earlier about the fines, somebody putting out their trash or not putting out their trash. I think something has to be looked at as far as the suggestion of minor fees or fines versus major fines. Noise would be a major fine. Maybe the renters are actually fined when they have to show up for the second time versus the homeowner or the property manager, just to get the point across just as if they showed up with a dog on the beach. Maybe to get the point across a little faster to the renters that are there. Again, we purchased in Indian Rocks because there is no HOA. We had property rights. I just want to make sure that everybody has an equal balance here for everyone, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly. Good evening. It's a long night. Thanks for hanging in there so long. My name's Kelly Sisrick, I live at 448 Harvard Drive South. I'm a 30-year resident of Indian Rocks Beach. And the state and the county, they get the revenue, and the city gets the bills. The commission has to do this job of regulation because the state won't, and the online platforms can't. In 2018, the ordinance our city passed allowed the vacation rental owners to self-certify that they were in compliance. There were no inspections that were done after 2018, and that clearly hasn't worked. There are 300 homes out there with "Homes Not Hotels" signs because there were hundreds of frustrated residents who used to have neighbors next door, and now they have unattended hotels. There's no desk clerks to monitor who's coming and going. We've already seen the drug crimes and the shootings on Florida's east coast that happened in the vacation rentals, and we want to keep that out of our neighborhoods. I commend you for putting sensible occupancy maximums in place and for starting the inspection process to make sure these properties will become as safe as hotels. I hope those compliance measures will become a deterrent for future bad actors who run mobile properties here with little regard for implementing their own oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Evening, Kevin Haislich, 501 Janus. I look at it with a different lens here because I anticipate, no matter what you all do, your ordinance will end up in litigation. And one of the things that I look at, from being a practicing lawyer in Pinellas County for 34 years and loving couple billion apple pies, is that you do it the right way. And my concern is, in 2018, you passed a number of ordinances. And I don't have the stats in front of me, I assume that you have the data that will show that the number of complaints and the number of citations that were issued exponentially increased, that you availed yourself at all other remedies before passing this, including going to local ordinance court. I assume that you previously tried to get a magistrate in here to cover the plethora of violations that you had. Because these are the questions that a circuit court will ask you. What steps did you take? Why did they fail? Why did you pass this ordinance? I saw some of the data you put, I think you had nine noise ordinances this last year. I assume that's not the number, I assume it's much greater than that. Because those are things that a judge are going to ask you. Now, I'm not giving you advice, although I'm going to give you advice. I mean, the problem I see is this, that when you pass this ordinance now, what you're doing is going to have to do this over again in two or three years. Because the problem is that you've got, well, let's take the example of the last, least intrusive value test. That means, are there other means to solve this problem? And I think a circuit court will ask you, how many noise ordinances did you issue? How many times did the sheriff come out? Did it move from 30 times to 50 times to 90 times to 120 times? How many disorderly conduct tickets were given? How many people arrested? How did it escalate exponentially since 2018? Because the problem is, if the data's not there, that'd be problematic. I think it's also fair, and you know, this Mr. Moore, that if the ordinance you're putting together gets passed, and certainly Pinellas County is untested, the Second DCA is untested, these other statutes and ordinances that are passed around the states have not gone to the district court. And I think at this point, you've got persuasive opinions from other counties that will not sway a Pinellas County circuit judge. So I think the problem that you have, unless you've got data that I haven't seen, is what you've done to pass has failed, and what steps have you taken? And I assume you have the data somewhere, because if you don't, a judge will expose that. That's all.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, next we have Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Go ahead, Paul, you're up.
Hi, Paul.
Paul, we're not getting any audio from you.
Fixed it, how about that?
Okay.
Yeah, Paul, can you please state your full name and your address?
Paul Pettit, 726 First Street, Indian Rocks. Our block is filled with short-term rentals. We actually own a duplex, which we rent out to short-term rentals. I think what I'm hearing from our neighbors and our friends in the area is not so much a problem with having short-term rentals. With, I understand down at Harvard Drive, we have a lot of constituents there, excuse me, I'm meeting, who are complaining about the short-term rentals down there. But if we could address the elephant in the room that we can't do anything about, it's investors from out of the area and not talking about people who come here with their family so many times a year, and then rent their places out for the rest of the year. But it's the institutional investors, it's the property investors that have never set foot on the island and have no idea about the culture or the values of our area. I'm not sure that we can do anything about that. But that's from what I've heard, living here for the last four years and the complaints of our neighbors. I think that is the problem of people not realizing what type of community we really are and infiltrating that just for their short-term profit until they can flip their property to another investor who's going to make even more money. Like I said, no lawyer, don't know anything about property laws, but that's what we're hearing. And thank you for your time, and thank you for addressing the issue.
Thank you, Paul. John?
John Fanskill, 448 Harvard Drive South. I wanted to thank Greg and Randy and the staff and all of you. This was a lot of work. The preparation that was put into this was incredible. As we've heard from Greg previously when we went to Home Beach, they used to have a population of around 5,000 residents. Because of the invasion of short-term rentals, it's down to only 900 residents. So I appreciate you stepping in. I noticed in our west of, about close to 300, that would be about 600 residents. I noticed in our west of, we've got close to 300, that would be about 600 residents we've lost fairly recently. So I'm glad you stepped in, and hopefully we'll be able to slow that somewhat. All the things that you presented have been reasonable, they've been deemed necessary by other cities, and if people want to sue us, go ahead. I hope they lose their money, I assume they're going to lose their money, but lawyers will make some money, but I don't think they're going to do very well. These things have held up in court. And we've spent millions of dollars on things like undergrounding, if we spend some money on trying to save the city, I think that's a very noble cause. I'll have to go with RB, if you want to rethink about putting outside speakers. It's so easy to monitor whether they have outside speakers or not, but a noise ordinance, like you said, that's, you know, how do you, DB meters and all, it's just not going to work. But if you say they cannot have outside speakers, that's cut and dry, so I highly recommend that. And the other thing is about, some of the cities and counties have a maximum of guests. For instance, if they might have 50% of your occupancy, that's how many guests you can have. That's going to become more and more important as people, when people fly in from New England, it isn't a big deal, but when they come from Tampa or other places where they can drive, and then somebody rents a house, they're going to have lots and lots of friends coming over and staying. So I think it's really helped the situation if you consider putting in a set cap on the number of guests, and probably related to the number of occupancy. So again, thank you so much for what you've done, you've all done an incredible job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Good evening.
The past mayor, then the new commission, Luke LaRoe, 2240 Bel Air Road. And I just want to put on the record what a pleasure and privilege it's been to work with Mr. Mora. Early on, when I got involved in this for my several clients, I asked him to share with me the research that he did in the form of somewhat of an informal public records request, and be careful what you wish for, I've got two banker's boxes worth of stuff. So I've looked at everything that we've put forward, and I know that we've all looked together at different ordinances, from Flagler County, Indian Harbor, Sarasota, Annaria, Holmes Beach, Reddington Beach, Fort Myers, Marathon, half dozen Attorney General opinions going back to 2014, and probably the 12 or so cases that deal with this. But when I spoke with Randy, one of the suggestions that he made was, why don't you see what your clients would like to propose, put together an ordinance that you think would help us deal with all of these issues? And I said, "It would be a privilege to do that." So I dug a little deeper into the ordinances that were out there, and I found one that I thought was very, very useful. It happens to be the ones that you already have. And the reason I say that is I think that the genesis of a lot of the disputes that we've been having to work our way through, I think, come from a misunderstanding of what you already have in your code. Article 9, short-term vacation rentals, already has a lot of the same definitions. It has minimum requirements, you have to get your Department of Revenue certificate, the Department of Business and Professional Regulation license, your business tax receipt, all of the things that you have to do to apply for that, which I think is certainly something that you can enforce. And then they have the minimum life safety requirements. I would express my appreciation again to Assistant Chief Pigley, he's sent us the work that he's done on this. And I know how much work is going into this, but I'm going to suggest one alternative that I think will address all of the concerns. The people that I represent are responsible corporate citizens. And just from looking at everything that's taken place here, and the many meetings that I've been to, and just the acrimony, I hate to say it, if I wasn't a First Amendment lawyer, I'd probably say you should focus on a sign ordinance because of all these competing signs, but that would be a little bit out of my league. But having said all that, I think that the answer to what you need to do to solve this problem is simply go through the ordinance that you have. It has a provision for the posted responsible party. It does require 24 hours a day, seven days a week, of having someone that would directly respond. And what it also does is it brings in all the other useful aspects of your code. I've heard talk about the noise ordinance not being effective. I looked at your noise ordinance, that's Article 2. And if you look at it, it's got every imaginable definition, including, I have a number of people that have committed their time to me, Heidi Navarro, Benjamin Roy, and Ken Hazlitt. So I can just get a couple more minutes before I can finish my presentation.
Ken already spoke, so you can't use his.
That was Kevin, I'm talking about.
It's Kevin.
They look alike. So in the noise ordinance, there are code enforcement penalties for all of that, and I think that the definitions, again, in looking at what you already have, would certainly be enforceable. The criteria to be considered in determining whether there exists unreasonable noise in violation of our code, the volume of the noise, the intensity of the noise, the volume and intensity of background noise, the nature and zoning of the area in which the noise impacts, the time of day or night the noise occurs, the duration of the noise, the proximity of the sound of residential sleeping facilities. There's not one complaint that I've heard anybody make that would not be more than adequately addressed if this noise ordinance was enforced. And instead of trying to enforce a regulation or adopt a new regulation that essentially imposes this vast bureaucratic administrative burden on everybody, you actually focus on the people that have shown through their conduct that they don't respect the rights of others. I heard people mention the golden rule. I think that's a good place to start. I think if everybody worked on that, it would be wonderful. But the ones that don't work on it, you can enforce what's already on your books against them successfully. In both the noise ordinance section and in the short-term rental section, it gives you the right to enforce that through both your city code and code enforcement restrictions. And I think that when I had met with Mr. Mora, I'm also a member of the Florida Local Government Section, and I get a lot of the ads that come by on everybody that belongs, they all get the same things. And on January 13th, I saw, "Here you go. Summary: The City of Indian Rocks Beach is seeking proposals for contracted code-compliant special magistrate services. It is the intent of the city to promote, protect, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens by appointing one or more code-compliant special magistrates with the authority to affirm or reverse code enforcement citations and fines, etc." There's your answer. I think what has happened is that, like many municipalities in Pinellas County, instead of engaging your own special magistrate that has a feel for the needs of your community, you send these cases off to local ordinance court. I've been there a thousand times, you're there with a number of other people, open containers from downtown St. Pete, people that won't take the broken machine, the washing machines out of their backyard. You don't get the level of attention that you would get through a special magistrate. So what I'm going to suggest is that, rather than get involved in adopting a new ordinance which remains untested, Kevin Hazlitt basically went through that, all of the cases that have been decided have a specific theme. And as painful as it is for the people that absolutely will not countenance short-term rentals or vacation rentals, is that when the courts look at the restrictions that are adopted by various communities, they look to see how much they deviate from the regulations that that community imposes on single-family homes. That's the theme. There has not been any case decided anywhere in Florida which has upheld the level or intensity of the restrictions that you're considering. And what I'm suggesting to you, also dovetails on Mr. Hazlitt's comments, if there's a challenge that is made to the new ordinance that's untested, there's other people that are trying the same thing down the street, that they're already in court. But the bottom line is that, I think that if you give the existing ordinance a chance with a new special magistrate, you don't have to go through all this agony. You'll find a mechanism that allows people that if they don't like the noise at noon, much less 10 o'clock, or they don't like amplified noise at any time. I think it's not so much a question of occupancy as it is a question of conduct. And I think that based on what you have, and I compliment whoever drafted this ordinance, again, I would simply close by saying, what you already have is one of the harshest ordinances in the state already. You don't have to go through all this additional exercise. And I compliment Mr. Mora for the incredible hard work that he's put into this, and everything that he put together for you to consider. But I think if you just take a step back, we try to let everybody live and peacefully coexist with each other with an eye toward the golden rule and the enforcement of what's already there. You can solve these problems without alienate anyone, alienating anyone that might want to engage in the short-term rental occupation, that are responsible citizens, that do care about the community, that put a lot into the community, that want to add to the benefit of the economic welfare of this wonderful town, and do it the right way. And I'm happy to have had the privilege of putting this together for you. I compliment you for your hard work, and I know that you'll do the right thing. Do your homework, look at your code, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Luke. We are going to wrap this up, you will be our last speaker if you'd like to come on.
Hi, Jessica Fodderingham, 2301st Street. Myself, my husband, we own a short-term rental. And basically, I want to just be, like, stand out here and say, "We don't feel welcome. We don't." I come to my house and, you know, I'm basically looking at, I can't even look at my neighbors. They don't want us around, and it's very apparent. They are habitual. They call constantly the police. And in the reports, because I've actually received them, I requested them, it is noted by the police that they do not like us as vacation renters, and they have never found a violation of the property. And it's crazy, because there's a lot of complaints, and it's unnecessary. I fear that with the violation policy, that the three strikes are out, is going to be an issue for people with neighbors such as mine. And that's unfortunate, and I don't want that to be an issue. I don't want to be in fear of having neighbors that completely dislike us, and who are flat-out going, I know they're going to, because they're doing it all the time, going to complain about my property, when I have done as much as I can to try to regulate, you know, they have our numbers, they call us, we try to assist in any way possible, we go out there, we do everything. But, because we are local, we don't live in Indian Rocks Beach, but we live locally to where we can be down here in a drop of a hat, and we do take calls if they're complaining at 3:00 in the morning that somebody's talking too loud. And something is said for that. So it's not that it doesn't happen, and nobody's saying it doesn't. So I just wanted to address that, I'm concerned about that majorly. Also, as an adult or a responsible individual, if I want to be in the pool at 11:00 at night and have a quiet, you know, common conversation with somebody, I shouldn't be limited to say that I can't be in the pool and have a conversation. I think that's very unfair, and I ask that you take that into consideration as well. It's more of a be respectful to your neighbors, and I hope that they're not going to be evasive in that manner. Also, I wasn't sure, I know that there were proposed ordinances that were on the table about limitation of golf cart rental passports, non-smoking on your property for gas, I don't smoke myself, I hate it, but, or no pets, are those things still on the table? Maybe I can email and get those questions answered, because I know you can't answer now. But that was one of the things. I do have a couple people that are willing to, I just have a couple more things that are, they're willing to give up their time, you need that, do you need their names? I just have one, I have like two more. You want the names?
Yes, please.
Uh...
Are they present tonight?
Yes, they are.
Can they just stand up?
Paul Maybucci, 414.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to ask for was for you guys to consider some sort of allowance for children. I really do feel that, not all, like babies, like, if I have, I have a one-year-old, and I think that it's a harsh thing for me to be limited, because I'm older by one baby or two babies, maybe even, it's like something that you guys take that into consideration, that you add an allowance for babies or young, very young children, and I don't think that's an unrealistic expectation or anything like that, so I'm asking for that. The other thing I was going to say is, I'm really not sure about the parking. I am concerned because there's a lot of times where I'm driving and I rent a property, my husband might leave the day before I do, and I have to have my car, and he has to have his, because we both work and we have to do different things, whether it's doctor appointments or whatever. That would limit other people locally to, you know, not being able to take two vehicles because maybe they only rented a one-bedroom, and they need two, two parking lots. So I ask that, that's something like that, you have exceptions to the rules, so it's not an end-all, be-all type of thing. So I think that's all I have to say. And thank you, guys. I know it's a really hard decision, and everything you guys have to do here, and it's not easy, but I do thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica. Well, since Scott has his hand up his heart, so he can speak.
I will be quick. Scott Shapiro, 2032 Toynham Parkway. Good job, guys. 23 years of living here, lots of conflicts we've had in public, remember that? We had neighbor against neighbor, neighbors wanted to walk to public so they can get their rotisserie chicken. Okay, remember that? Remember that? We had the waterway debacle. This was the best resolution, best job I've seen, the commission, led by Randy's direction, in my opinion. You guys, you guys did phenomenal. Thank you. Of course, not everybody's going to be happy, but again, just want to stipulate 23 years, two houses, one I live in, one's been in a rental the entire time, so I really don't have a bone on either side. Other than rights that exist currently under the law and ordinance, don't take them away, because that might be part of my financial retirement. That might be part of my plan to short-term rental one of my houses if I want. And obviously, there's an ordinance in place, enforce it. We have plenty of ordinances in place that aren't enforced. Look at the program, it says residence only. It's never enforced. Plenty of people that don't live in town use it. Plenty, contractors, you name it. We have a shark fishing ordinance. You guys rescinded that, so now people can shark fish. But that was an example of another one that was never enforced. We have the light ordinance, okay? We protect the turtles and the people who live on the beach, but nowhere else in the neighborhoods. I've got lights, when I look in my backyard, it looks like they've got a landing strip on the other side, like they're guiding into 747s. You know, I can't open my windows, it's insane. Other than that, I've been saying this for 10, 15 years, a speaker's clock would be great, so we know where we stand on minutes.
I want one, too.
Okay, other cities have it. It would be fantastic.
Five years.
I mean, there's plenty of us residents that have parties, we all know it. There's two nights a week you guys need to carve out, boat parade, New Year's Eve, period. It'll be impossible to enforce who's having a party and who's a resident and who isn't. Plenty of neighbors have parties that have over 20, 30, 40 people. Sometimes they let us know ahead of time, "Hey, we're having a party, beware." Sometimes they don't. It could be a birthday, a wedding, an anniversary, a hip replacement party. There's plenty of reasons people have parties in this town, okay? You know, I mean, if I want to have a fraternity reunion party at my house in the next year or two, I can invite all my buddies from California and have a party, I have that right. Obviously, I can't break the law and go beyond midnight or things like that. The other thing regarding pools, I'd just like to say, no Marco Polo or sunset. Problem solved. Thank you, guys.
To close the public hearing, and I just want to thank all of you who came out tonight and are still here, you're troopers, we appreciate you. I want to thank Captain Linder, Pinellas Bus Fire and Rescue Brian for being here with us tonight, Jay, and of course Randy. Their law firm is awesome. Appreciate all of you being here. I want to especially thank the commission, they have, you know, most of them are relatively new, three years, two years, one year. I don't know if they really bargained for that when they got on air of what this was going to be like, so I appreciate all of their time. And from this, we will work on our ordinances. Randy will be back with us, and we'll tweak things, and you'll have two more times, this will be on the agenda to look at what we come up with. And thank you for everything, and have a great night. Can I have a motion to a... I'm making a motion to a judge.
Second, second!